All right, I think we're going to get started. We will begin with the invocation. We have Pastor Ray Douglas of Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church. Pastor? And we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Todd Stub.
Let's pray. By God, we thank you again for you being our God and our Father. But we ask right now your choice blessings on this council as they do the business of the city, that you would give them the wisdom to make the right decisions that ensure the safety and the economic and social well-being of all of our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. And we will begin with Office of the Mayor. There we find Item A is an Economic Development Update from Roy Williams, President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for having me back. I'm mindful of your agenda today and a lot of your presentations, so I'll try to set the bar here and be brief and hope everyone follows suit. So a couple of things, starting off with our legislative agenda. We spent a lot of time at the Capitol, both here and in Washington, D.C., trying to impact legislation that impacts our community here. We go through a significant process on how we come up with our legislative priorities, and there's just a couple I want to mention. One in particular, we are partnering with the Tulsa Regional Chamber and the State Chamber to address a statewide workforce shortage specifically in the area of software and cyber engineers. Right now, we have a multitude of companies who are sort of crying out to us about the difficulty in hiring that particular skill set. And Tinker Air Force Base is probably the most prominent one in terms of their needs. So we believe that a program that really incentivizes that, much like we did the aerospace engineering tax credit, can make a difference. So we're advocating for that at the legislature right now with our other partners. Secondly, we're continuing to advocate for smart and safe justice reforms. Y'all are very familiar because y'all are very engaged with us on working on our criminal justice initiatives. We can't continue to expend the kind of money statewide that we're doing on incarceration, and we certainly can't do it on a local level either. So we're supporting legislation and helping to advance legislation to reform sentencing and rehabilitation program funding across the state, both at the county level as well as the state level. Our criminal justice reforms at the state level will obviously have an impact on what they will, on our local incarceration efforts, so one plays to the other. As you know, our Criminal Justice Advisory Council now has full-time staff. We hired our first executive director last year, and that person is pursuing all of the recommendations of the Vera Institute in their analysis of our criminal justice system. We also have two new county commissioners, both who ran on platforms of criminal justice, which is really good. We have four new judges who were elected, and criminal justice was very high on their priorities as well. And also, a lot of new legislators at the state level ran on criminal justice reform platforms. So we're seeing an increasing awareness and a heightening ability of those to take some action. We continue to see our county jail numbers decline. We're now at about 40% of the level that we were when we began these initiatives about three years ago. So while we still have much more work to do, we at least know we're making progress. A little bit about some of our economic activity. Our economic pipeline continues to be very strong. We're working on 73 active projects right now. If you total up those projects, we'll never get all of them, but if we did, it would be 18,280 new primary direct jobs, about $575 million annually in payroll, and about $4.5 billion in capital expenditures. Historically, the month of January is a slow month, although we did make an announcement in January for a new headquartered manufacturing firm here. And our economic development team had spent about 18 months working on that project. To recap a little bit about 2018, we were engaged with 124 different companies that are either expanding or relocating to our market in 2018. And of those companies, 11 are companies that we helped recruit, so they are totally new to the market. In total, the projects that we worked with last year have created approximately 7,380 new direct jobs and right at $1.5 billion in new investment. Average wage for all of those jobs exceeded $47,000 on an annual basis, and about $347 million in new annual payroll will occur every year. As you saw and as you continue to hear about, in December, Heartland, the U.S. Division of Global Payments and the fifth-largest payment processor in the United States broke ground on its headquarters in downtown Oklahoma City. They're going to expand their current workforce by about 345 people and build a new 100,000-square-foot headquarters in automobile alley at Fifth Street. Other major announcements in 2018 included CACI International, Amazon, Rural Outsourcing, Hogan Taylor, Dell Real Foods, Send Q3 Restaurant Solutions, Booze Allen Hamilton, Halliburton Energy Services, American Fidelity Assurance Company, Dell Technologies, and Tricor Technologies, just to name a few. Retail activity as well has been very exciting. If you've been on the Kirkpatrick Turnpike lately, you've noticed the construction of Costco. That company plans their grand opening in May, a project that our staff has been working on for years and years and years. And as well, there's a number of new projects that we'll be going into on the Broadway Extension where American Fidelity is expanding some facilities up there. You probably read and know that in November of last year, Tinker Air Force Base was chosen to be the MRO for the B-21 bomber. That's the next-generation bomber, the long-range strike bomber. It's currently in its engineering and manufacturing development stage, and it is expected that those planes will begin arriving here for maintenance in 2025, seven years from now. So we're working closely with Tinker in preparation for that. They are also getting closer to the maintenance work on the new KC-46A Pegasus. That's the new tanker. The first one just arrived on February the 8th at Altus, which is where training will be for the pilots. But then all of the maintenance comes here, and that's a $1.5 billion project, about 1,400 new jobs. And we believe that the B-1 is going to be just as big, if not bigger, than that. So Tinker is really positioning itself well for the next number of decades. Our DC Fly-In, which we do every year, is coming up on May 1st and 2nd. Would encourage any of you who wish to go on that. Some of you have gone with us before. Our two-day program there will include briefings from all of our congressional delegation members. We'll have a reception on Capitol Hill with defense leaders and congressional members and leadership staff. And off-the-hill sessions will be covering military defense updates, immigration, and the political landscape in Washington, D.C. So please contact us if you're interested. Every month now, the Chamber started doing Chamber forums, and these are on top of all of the other events that we have been doing. And in January, we hosted a panel discussion about Oklahoma's eight opportunity zones, Oklahoma City's opportunity zones, and how to invest that. Packed house, standing room only. This month, the Superintendent of Oklahoma City Public Schools, Sean McDaniel, was our program, and he talked about Pathway to Greatness, which all of you are familiar with. And in March, we're going to have two of the newest members of the council on our forum to talk about their vision for Oklahoma City and get to know them a little bit better. I wanted to mention, too, that two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to lead a delegation of about a dozen of my peers to Israel for the purpose of better understanding what's driving Israel's economy. If you don't know it, Israel is probably the most entrepreneurial country in the world, more startups per capita than any country in the world. And so we had the opportunity to learn about what is driving that, what their culture is, to better understand their business geopolitical and historical makeup. We also met with venture capitalists, scientists. We visited R&amp;D centers and toured their startup scene. And in the process of doing some research on going there, I found there's actually an Israeli company that was established based on research that came out of OMRF. And it is a company that is looking at neurological treatment of Alzheimer's disease. So we have a connection with Israel, even though probably a lot of us didn't realize that from a business standpoint. So I'll conclude with that, but I want to just take a moment to offer my thanks to Councilman Salyer and Councilman Shadid for all of the work y'all have done for our city. Your passion has been noticed oftentimes, and we certainly appreciate that. So we wish the best to you, and thank you for your service. With that, I'm happy to take any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Roy. Any questions for Roy?
Yeah, I have a question. So we're about seven months away from finalizing what goes into the MAPS-4 package. And yesterday, there was a story about, or the designs for an arena at the fairgrounds, right? With a price tag of about $125 million if you include the add-on. And they, do we, David, they quoted you saying that there's traction for that program, that it would be transformational. I'm not sure if there's any polling or that we have any data, but I've run on a MAPS-for-Neighborhoods campaign twice. I've had town hall meetings. I've talked to probably thousands of people. I haven't really heard any clamoring for an arena at the fairgrounds, much less for $125 million. I really haven't heard anybody ask for that. Is there data to support such a large percentage of MAPS-4 going to an arena? That'd be question number one. Number two would be, since the State Fair Board has an allocation of 6/11ths of the hotel motel tax, so they have a dedicated funding stream, and they can use that to issue revenue bonds. So they have a mechanism to borrow money and build things like an arena. So with them having such a large revenue stream and the ability to go out and borrow large amounts of money, is there a need to put such a large expenditure on the MAPS-4 program?
I have not seen any polling. I'm not privileged any polling. We haven't done any polling. The Chamber has not yet. So I don't know where the voters are on that issue. I mean, I do know, because I'm involved with the Fair Board, that the facility that is currently out there is 55 years old and is in a horrible stage of disrepair. That doesn't necessarily mean it should be a MAPS project, but something needs to be done with that facility if we're going to continue to expand on equine activities as well as high school activities out there, et cetera. But I really can't answer your question directly as to whether or not that should or shouldn't be a MAPS project.
And if I may just jump in. Your quote you just used for me was taken out of context by the story and now taken further out of context by you. So that was a statement I made in my State of the City address in reference to about 24 different projects. A very soft blanket statement. I mean, to be attributed as some sort of statement of support for the State Fair project to be in MAPS, I want to completely disavow that.
Because that's how it read in the story yesterday. I mean, it made it sound like you were talking about this or we.
It was from the speech, which no doubt you have read and pored over, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. That's why I mentioned it. I appreciate that clarification. So one question would be, and I've asked this before, Kenny's not here. You know, you have 6/11ths of the hotel motel tax going to this entity, the State Fair Board, some of the most powerful people in the city running it. We don't really have a lot to do with running that. But I've asked, you know, especially if the contention is that they're not able to issue revenue bonds, and so you'd have to put it on MAPS-4. You know, are those books open? Like, can the council, is the council able to audit those books? Is the council able to, or the public, who's asked to potentially put $125 million on MAPS-4, able to look at those books and see what the State Fair Board is doing with that 6/11ths?
So I do believe we have an audit clause in our contract with the Fair Board. The real issue, though, is that the funds that come in from the hotel tax do not go to the Fair Board. They are managed through the Public Property Authority. Now, the Fair is involved with the decisions on how the projects, what projects we're funding and all, but that stays within the Public Property Authority. It's where those bonds are issued, and the funds are actually expended out of the Public Property Authority. So it's all within the city's financial records.
And thus would be subject to open record?
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's audited. They're on our audited financials, so all of that is available. I would also further say that the bonding capacity is there right now because of what has been bonded already against that portion of the hotel tax. There's only, I mean, we've done some estimates. I think we'd scheduled a couple times to meet, and because of lateness of meetings, we've been canceled. But there's only about a $5 million capacity right now upfront. And so that's something that there's not a capacity in there now. Because of the outstanding bonds that we already have, there's not a capacity right now in many, for many years, that would be able to handle a project of this size.
Okay, so, well, Roy, then that brings up my next question, which is, I noticed on the, during the City Council elections, the Chamber had a survey for all the City Council candidates. And one of the questions was, would you support a 1% increase in the hotel motel tax? That would allow an increase in the revenue bonding capacity. So is, I mean, is that something that's being thought about?
The discussion at the Convention and Visitor Bureau was about that one penny being used for marketing, in light of the fact we have a new convention center coming on, new facilities and capacity. So it was not discussed as being used for retirement of bonds, but for strictly marketing Oklahoma City for convention purposes.
Okay. Is that something that's being considered or?
It's being talked about. There's not been any action taken by anybody. It's just been a discussion.
So if the council were to decide not to put an arena in MAPS-4, would you see the Chamber still supporting MAPS-4 and running the campaign?
I can't speak for my leadership. They tell me what to do. I don't tell them what to do.
Okay. But that, what does your gut tell you?
You know, what we support is what the voters are willing to say yes on. We don't want to run a campaign that we know is going to fail. So based on whatever projects the council talks about and whatever polling tells us, those would be the things we would advocate for.
So would that polling be available to the council to review in making decisions or for the public to review and knowing?
We don't make our polling public. We're private nonprofit corporation, so we don't, what we poll and what we pay for is our property. And the reason we don't release it is because we test a lot of stuff in that polling, and people who are against things could use that information. So that'd be like a football coach giving the team the playbook for the upcoming game, the opposition.
Although you could release part of the poll, I suppose.
We always share information with council members and leaders throughout the community.
Craig, does the council have the ability to do polling? I mean, I know we can't run a campaign for a sales tax, but can we do polling and then make that public?
Yes, we can do our own polling. We would have to hire, you know, go through a process and hire someone to poll, but we can do our own polling, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Roy? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Item 3B, Appointment of Samuel Merchant to Serve as a Member of the Board of Adjustment. This is a reappointment. I'd entertain a motion for that.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have A and B. We can take it with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we have Item 5, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. On page one, we have Item 6A. The applicant has requested that we move that to March the 12th. They need to make a correction on their permit. On page 22, Item 9A1, it's PC 10552. The applicant has requested a continuance to March the 12th on the agenda. Page 24, Under Dilapidated Structures, Item 9H1, and I'll just take these down. All these are recommended to be stricken. Item A, 623 South Dewey Avenue, we need to re-notify. Item E, 2341 Southwest 50th Street, we need to re-notify. Under Item, let's see, this is under 9I1, Unsecured Structures, Item B, 2821 Guilford Lane, we need to, the owner has secured. On Item D, 2402 South Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner has secured. On Item H, 3101 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item K, 1215 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item I, L, 832 Northeast 20th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 528 Southwest 46th Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 620 Southwest 68th Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 231 Northwest 81st Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 424 Northwest 83rd Street, the owner has secured. Item V, 1408 Northwest 95th Street, the owner has secured. Under Abandoned Buildings, on page 28, 9J1, all of these items are stricken, recommended to be stricken. Item B, 623 South Dewey Avenue, to re-notify the owner. Item C, 2821 Guilford Lane, owner has secured. Item C, E, 2402 South Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner has secured. Item K, 1215 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item L, 832 Northeast 20th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 528 Southwest 46th Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 620 Southwest 68th Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 231 Northwest 81st Street, the owner has secured. And Item R, 424 Northwest 83rd Street, the owner has secured. And then on page 31, Item 9B, this is a resolution regarding the Brockway Center.
11.
I'm sorry, 11B. The applicant, or the care center had requested that we defer this to March the 12th, and Councilman Nice has agreed with that. So we'll defer this item. And that is all the items that I have.
Okay. Right. Okay. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. That brings us to Item 6, which has no items now after its continuance, and that means we'll recess the council meeting. We'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through F, which we can take with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through D that we can take with one motion.
Can I ask a question on this? This is, we're trading in all of our electric golf cars, getting new ones, and it's, I guess it costs about $555,000 after the trade-in?
Yes.
Are they, they all need to be?
They do these in lots periodically, and as they get older and they're having maintenance problems and they're having dependability problems, and they'll come through and they'll replace them.
Just all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. I think we had a motion, but I'm not sure if we had a second on this. Got a second? Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have Items A through C that we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council. Where we find ourselves, on page 6 of your printed agenda, Item 7, the Consent Docket. Now, I'll go ahead and tell you, we have presentations on P, Q, AK, AL, AM, AN, AP, AQ, AR, AS, and that's it. So is there anything else that a council member would like to pull out and discuss?
I was not paying attention, so I may be redundant, Mayor. Could I ask a quick question on the OCEAT? There was something I didn't, that got past me.
We're not technically in OCEAT right now, but I suppose you can ask a question.
It's just a general question. In this case, we have a price adjustment with waste management because of the CPI increase? Is that a contract that has a provision that that could also go down?
I believe it adjusts. I'll have to confirm that with Chris, but I believe it adjusts based on CPI regardless of whether it goes up or down, but I'll have to confirm that.
Okay. That was just a curiosity.
I'll find out and I'll let you know.
Okey-dokey.
So is there any items to be discussed by council members besides the ones already mentioned under the consent docket?
Mayor, is 7P getting discussed?
P is, yep, we got a presentation.
Presentation, okay.
Probably first up. Anybody else?
And maybe 7AR.
7AR.
That is already.
Already a presentation?
Really more likely than not that we have a presentation.
Okay, then I'm done. My list was covered.
Councilwoman Nice?
I know we have a presentation on Item AM, and I will ask that you take the lead. I will, I'll be stepping out for that one.
Oh, okay, so I'll pull it out. We'll do the present, AM.
AM.
Okay.
Correct.
We'll do the presentation and then do all the other presentations, but when we do votes, we'll pull that out for a separate vote.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you pull AK out for a separate vote also, after the presentation?
Certainly. Okay. Anything else? All right, well, we'll take them in order then. We'll start with P.
So Robbie Kensel is here from our Planning Department, and then Randy Marks on Q. She'll do P, and then he'll do Q.
Good morning, Robbie Kensel. I'm the Arts Liaison in the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs in the Planning Department. I will not have a presentation, but I want to talk to you about the Artist in Residence, and Randy will be pulling up the next one for you. So the Artist in Residence Program will begin, should council approve it this morning, begin with a term of March 1st through the end of this calendar year. We have selected, a committee has selected the artists from candidates in our pre-qualified artist pool. We have, we now are in the fourth year of our pre-qualified pool, and it's for artists with projects under $25,000. This allows us to work with them very directly and help train them, supporting the creative sector. So we wanted to make sure that the artist was selected from the pool because we expect this opportunity to accelerate the selected artist's growth as an entrepreneur and as an artist because of the interaction in City Hall. And also, as a benefit to the city, we will be surrounded by beautiful art every day in our first, second, and third floors. We're going to be purchasing a simple hanging system. You might have noticed that the walls are marble on these floors, so we will be hanging from the ceiling on some slim metal stretchers. The work of Erica Bonavita, too, she's a very young artist. This is a really big opportunity, a great resume bullet for her. She does still life paintings, and most of her work is based on textiles. So she uses a lot of shiny and matte and textured fabrics and creates them. She does very large paintings as well as small. She's also started introducing foils and shiny objects. One of her first things that she plans on doing is working with the City Clerk's Office and the archivist and really doing some research about history to kind of inform the work that she will present in City Hall. So I wanted to know if you had any questions?
It's been so much fun to see the Artist in Residence at the Skirvin Hotel. So I think that folks coming in and out of the building every day are really going to enjoy this. It's a great idea.
Yeah, the Skirvin helped us with sharing some of their documents for this. And in fact, the City of Moore is also looking at an Artist in Residence program now because they're patterning theirs after ours.
Great.
Thank you, Robbie. So Randy Marks with the Planning Department will give his presentation on the artwork at the Bennett Center at the fairgrounds.
This is Item Q.
Good morning, I'm Randy Marks, Associate Planner in Arts and Cultural Affairs. So the construction of the MAPS-3 Bennett Event Center was the source of the 1% for art funds for this particular project. Discussions went on with personnel at the fair for about two years about what kind of artwork they would like to see, and it was settled upon doing artwork in the lobby that you see in the lower right-hand corner. And the fair staff talked about wanting to see a piece of artwork that was inspired by STEAM, that is science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And they particularly wanted to see a piece of work that incorporated light into the artwork. The 1% funds, this is the project budget summary. The 1% funds, um, this is the project budget summary, a budget of $335,000 for the art award itself was decided upon, and any remaining funds that are left over after a construction of the piece, administration and so on, can be used as further artwork for the facility. The selection jury, um, so, a, a call goes out through Bid Sync, and artists respond to it, and we put together a selection jury comprised of people that have a broad range of experience with the facility, including in this case, the CEO of Oklahoma State Fair Inc., and also two arts commissioners. The selection jury chose the proposal that was made by Cliff Garten. Cliff is an internationally known artist, has work around the world, and he did, uh, he and his staff did a lot of research, and they were inspired by the Oklahoma sky, in particular, the, the types of clouds that you see in the, uh, lower photographs there, and then also in the historic meandering of the Canadian River. And so, the piece that they, uh, came up with, that they designed, is called Virga, which is a, a type of cloud. This is the piece that, that you would see, uh, and a, as a plan view at the top and then an elevation at the bottom, if you were able to look right through the building and see it. This is composed of half-inch hand-bent aluminum rod, and there are mirror image pieces, each one about 71 feet long, so the entire structure, uh, is about 150 feet altogether. So, in addition to the actual structure that will hang in the lobby, and that you'll see as you walk in the lobby, and then there'll be this magnificent structure right above you, it can interact with the light that is already in the building, and then the piece itself will be lighted with colored LED lights. So, the, uh, state fair staff will be able to create an ever-changing light show for various events. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So, next on item...
Well, if I may jump in, sorry, Mr. City Manager, real quick, we had a citizen sign up on item R, but I don't think he wishes to speak unless needed. Is that correct, Mr. Watkins?
That's right.
Okay, all right, then we will hold that thought in case we need you, and we will now move on, Mr. City.
All right, on item AK, Brent Bryant is going to make a presentation on this economic development project with allocation of, uh, it's actually Economic Development Agreement for allocation of Gulp Funds.
Good morning. Um, what I have is just a brief presentation. Back in May, uh, this body, along with the Economic Development Trust, approved an authorization for staff to negotiate an agreement with Amazon, along with, um, the allocation of $1.7 million of general obligation limited tax bonds to support this project. These two pictures are here, if you go back, the two pictures, that was when they started back in June, when they started doing dirt work, and that's their picture as of last week. Project's approximately 75% complete. It's a 2.65 million square foot facility with capital investment of over $140 million. We anticipate one little over 1,700 jobs to be created with an annual payroll of $45 million. Um, the million dollars that we're providing is assistance to them, a million of the million seven is based on 53 jobs at average wage of $60,000, and in addition, and, and $140 million worth of investment. We anticipate the fiscal year in the contract will be June 1st, and it'll run through June through May of every year. Hiring is to begin in the next four to six weeks prior to, uh, the opening of the facility, which they believe will be operational by the, by Q3 of '19. Again, it's a maximum incentive of $1.7 million. It's all performance-based. A million dollars of that is based on, uh, the job creation and the capital investment. Uh, they'll have to document the investments and, and show us that they've created the 53 jobs. In addition to that, um, there were some infrastructure improvements that were needed for the area, along Southwest 89th, along I-44, south, along 89th and Portland, uh, they're listed right there. We identified $1.4 million worth of cost to that. Amazon is, is doing, is doing those improvements to help the area with the anticipated increase in traffic flow, and what we agreed to is we would split half the cost up to $1.4 million. If their costs are $2 million, we're only paying $700,000. If their costs are a million dollars, we'll only be providing them a half a million dollars. So, um, and, uh, the Economic Development Trust approved this agreement yesterday, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right.
Doesn't look like any questions. Thank you, Brent. AL?
On AL, Karen Youngblood is here from the University of Central Oklahoma to, um, present information on the project for the additional, um, use of TIF 2 funds for improvements at Santa Fe Garage in the...
Thank you so very much for having us back. We have, uh, an additional request that we have been through. We have already received a very generous $1 million from the TIF funds, and we're going, we've requested another $250,000 to complete this project, as we all promised upfront in the original proposal, in our lease agreement, in all of our plans. So, you can look through your documents and see that when we were all working together and the garage was still owned by the city, the numbers all worked. Um, when we sold the garage, which is a, a great deal for the city, the timeframe that it happened to hit, out of everyone's control, was when all of the costs started increasing. We had increased tariffs on steel, uh, we had $40,000 of steel that, that had to be increased, um, and it also was when we were receiving just some increases on aluminum and, and different pricing. So, when we went out to rebid, even though we took the city's portion of our bid out, should have been $455,000 we removed from the bid, our bid only came back $9,000 less. So, significant increase. We had already negotiated our lease rate by that point, there was no way we could go back and revert, the city had already sold the, the garage itself, and so here we were with a dilemma. We had a lot of bake sales, looked in a lot of couch cushions, came up with $250,000 ourselves, and made the offer, could we please match $250,000 in TIF for $250,000 that we brought to the table for the increase that neither one of us foresaw when we first started. Um, we also went through and we looked for every way to re-engineer. Unfortunately, according to the bid, the way that the bid was, we know that glass costs about $45 per square foot to remove. We went through and removed glass pieces, and we received $5 credits. So, re-engineering in those cases didn't work. We went through, and we did find some other ways. We changed some, uh, grades of carpet without actually sacrificing the integrity of the project, but just reducing costs. Um, and you can see those, just different things, moved some things to, to furniture instead of built-in. And so, that leads us to our TIF request. Uh, we have been wonderful and so grateful for the partnership that we've had with the city in this project. Bringing the Santa Fe Parking Garage on, space that's been dilapidated and, and isolated since the early 80s, will really be a key to bringing up the vibrancy of the city and the building itself for what we're doing over there. We anticipate several hundred students, we actually already have several hundred students each semester in our UCO downtown at Carnegie Center, and this center will actually be larger than that. So, the increase in sales tax, the increase in the mobility, the increase in the energy, the students we bring and the crossover should be a, a nice added benefit and, and payback to the city on that. With that, I will entertain any questions or thoughts, or...
Karen, are you moving out of the Carnegie Center?
No, ma'am.
Into this facility, or you're going to use both of them?
We are going to use both, yes. We, uh, we have a long-term lease on both facilities and have no intention of, uh, not occupying either one of them.
That was my question, what is the term of the lease at Santa Fe?
The term of the lease is an original 10 years, and I have three five, three additional five-year terms.
Any other questions?
So, what, I mean, we, we don't own this garage, we've sold it for considerably less than what I think it's worth. Have you, I mean, have you talked to the, the owners of the garage?
The deal...
Or was, I'm sorry, or was this addressed in the sales contract?
Yes.
It was.
When the appraisals were done, the lead, the finished, the, the appraisals were done based upon finished space there and with that lease in, in place, that that was a part of the negotiation. And that's where we had set the market rate on the lease based upon recouping the cost of the capital investment, and then made the agreement, made the sale, and then after the fact, this came out, and that's why we needed additional funding to help support the project.
But was, was the possibility of it, of it coming in over budget addressed in the sales contract?
It was not.
It should never have come in over budget, because when we went out to the original bid, it was in budget, and that's what we based everything on. When the sale went through, we had to disal, we had to unbid the first bid, because the terms had changed, and send it out for rebid, because the city was actually putting in some repairs. Obviously, the city wouldn't put in their repairs at that point, so we pulled the city's parts out and had to rebid it. That's what caused the bid to go up. It didn't change that the sales terms, it didn't change on the lease terms, it didn't change on, on any of the particulars, other than we kind of took a, a hickey on it because of pulling out the city's repairs.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions for Karen? All right.
Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll hold that till the very end of all this stuff, if that's why you're leaving. Okay, sorry. All right, uh, next up is AM, but we're going to hold both the discussion and the vote until we handle everything else, um, so that Councilwoman Nice can...
So, we'll do the presentation, Ron, we'll do the presentation and the vote at that time.
Yeah, so that me, brings us to AN.
So, on AN, we have Ben Sellers with the Pivot Project.
Good morning. I'm here to discuss our, our Hudson Avenue project in Oklahoma City, and I thought I'd start by describing briefly the project that's underway currently, the future development, and then some of the infrastructure issues that we ran into. Uh, so, this is, uh, the, the project is currently under construction, consists of three new tenants, Resolution Legal, Elk Valley Brewery, and Hudson Market. Uh, this is the new addition for the Resolution Legal, uh, property, and this is the new addition and renovation to the Elk Valley Brewery, which opened up, uh, this past December. And then this will be the Hudson Street Market, which will be opening up in April. Um, this overview of this entire block, um, the two center sections, the blue and green highlights are the existing projects that are under construction. Hudson Market Elk Valley, approximately $4.3 million investment, uh, Resolution Legal's a $4.5 million investment. Uh, the south red highlight is the future development, we are in the early planning stages on right now, that'll be a $20 million mixed-use development. And then the far north, pink highlighted side is a property that we don't own, but we currently have secured a long-term lease on, and, uh, this year will be a, a $250,000 reinvestment. So, our investment in this block is just under $30 million. So, uh, the reason we're here today is asked for, uh, infrastructure reimbursement funds. So, when, when we got into construction of the project, we ran into two, um, issues, insufficient water pressure and volume to supply the fire suppression system in the two-story building. So, we were, uh, required to extend to approximately 200 feet of water mains, which is the blue highlighted section there, uh, underneath Hudson Avenue. And, uh, in addition to the water main extension, we were required to put in a fire pump to get the sufficient water pressure and volume for that, that the sprinkler system in the buildings. Uh, the second major issue we had was the orange highlighted line under the alley, uh, we relied on city, uh, city infrastructure maps, and, uh, the sewer line that was on the maps actually did not exist, so we ended up installing 200 feet of, uh, new sewer main and new alley there. Uh, we've got 200,000 in total, uh, overages, overages or costs that we, we spent, um, on these two issues. Um, and our, our direct, uh, infrastructure cost was 134,000 of that, so the sewer main and the water main was 134,000. We are requesting $120,000, so a partial reimbursement for those public infrastructure improvements.
Okay, any questions?
Where do these funds come out of?
So, these are actually TIF funds, TIF 2, and there was an allocation sometime back of $300,000 total for, for infrastructure projects to help support other projects, and it was $60,000 for each, up to $60,000 for each. Since this covers more than one parcel, there was an allowance to do two of those, and so it was $120,000.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, next up on items AP, AQ, AR, and AS, there's several items here on our general obligation bond sale, and then on refunding, um, and so I have Kenny Sewell, our interim finance director, give a quick presentation on this.
And his presentation will encompass all of those items?
That's correct.
But we will pull out AQ specifically for a separate vote. Got it?
Good morning, so, um, just very quickly, AP and AQ are just our normal annual GEO bond sales, but the reason we have them broken into two this year is AP is the Gulp Bonds for the Economic Development Proposition, so this would be the first sale from the 2017 authorization. We're doing 30 million in Gulp Bonds, so that's half of what was authorized. AQ, and that, and those will be sold as taxable bonds. AQ are all the other projects that are tax-exempt projects, those are our normal infrastructure bonds, so you'll, you'll be seeing, um, items coming back, there'll be an ordinance that comes on, uh, the next couple of meetings, and we'll actually do the sale for both of these on March 26th, and they'll be done through competitive sale. So, after we finish those, I do want to report that on AQ, we're doing about 75 million. 44 million is from the 2007 authorization, and that will complete the issuance of all the bonds from the 2007 authorization. So, once we're done with AP and AQ, both of these sales on March 26th, the 2007 authorization will be complete, completely sold, and we'll have 836 million left to issue on the 2017 authorization.
Kenny, that's really notable, actually. When I came on the council 10 and a half years ago, we were still selling bonds from years and years back, so to be able to complete the 2007 sale, now, I think that's really a great accomplishment.
This, this completes the sale of those funds, we'll still have some time of spinning him on the projects, but it'll complete the sale, and that is all finished.
AR and AS are just refinancings of previous, uh, bonds that have been previously issued. So, and the reason we're doing these in two different sets is AR is actually, now, now that I've been around long enough, we're refunding the first Gulp Bonds we issued from the 2007. So, we, we did a, a bond sale in 2008 and a bond sale in 2010 that were both, our first two Gulp Bond sales. We're actually refunding those for savings. It's estimated that we're going to be refunding just under $19 million of Gulp Bonds. We're estimating on, on that, on AR, that we'll be saving about $1.2 million. You know, and this is all subject to where rates are, uh, in about a month. We're, we're doing that in, in, um, April. And so, we're just doing that purely for savings, to save on the annual debt service costs. AS, we're refunding the 2009 GEO Bonds. Um, we're doing just, we're, we're refinancing just under $25 million worth of bonds there. We estimate on that deal that we'll save about $2.4 million. So, AR and AS, the reason we're doing those is two, is again, AR are the Gulp Bonds, so it has to be done as a taxable bond issue, and AS has, is done as a tax-exempt bond issue, so that's what we're doing.
Kenny, if I could, that was my question on ARs, in, in this raising rate environment, how is it that we're able to refinance and save money?
Um...
And do we think that's going to continue into the long-term? I know it depends on...
Well, I wish I had a crystal ball on that, but, you know, we, we are seeing rates going up, however, the yield curve right now is fairly flat. You know, the other issue is oftentimes the big, the biggest factor is when we issue these, they're 20-year bonds. We do what's called rolling down the yield curve, you know, now we get here 10 years later, we're only issuing 10-year bonds or 11-year bonds to refinance 20-year bonds. So, that by nature, your rates are typically lower. But it's certainly something we'll watch, you know, it looks like we're going to have pretty healthy savings on this, but, but these are subject to the, this is, this is setting up the financing plan and authorizing the transaction. You'll have, you'll have two more resolutions on AR and AS, companion resolutions that are coming in the future that set the exact terms, but, um, we think we'll be able to realize those savings in the current rate environment.
Thank you, Kenny.
Let me, let me correct something I said earlier, I misheard Councilman Shadid, it's not AQ he wants pulled out for some votes, it's AK, and so we'll handle that at the proper time. Actually, are we out of presentation?
I think we're ready for AM.
Okay, then we'll do the, then we'll hold that for a moment. We'll do, um, a motion and a vote for all of the items except for AM and AK. So, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on all of those items? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and now we'll turn to AK. We already had the presentation, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Amazon, Al?
Yes.
Just, just a word, let me just say it one more time before I get off the council, just so that those who are here and those who are listening understand that when we give these, when we give these incentives, $1.7 million to Amazon, for, in, in my opinion, this is Santa Clausian economics, thinking that we're giving, we're making something happen. happen that wasn't going to happen anyway. This is the perfect piece of land for them, right next to the airport, they picked it out a long time ago, this is, they're doing it in cities across America, and they were going to do this whether we gave them 1.7 million or not. But what I think is important to remember is that it's not just 1.7 million, when you pay your property tax, many of you will pay it this month, we're borrowing this 1.7 million, and then we'll pay interest on it for 20 years to give to Amazon, one of the richest companies on earth, headed by one of the richest men on earth. So we'll pay interest on this 1.7 million for, for many, many years, to do something that I think would have happened anyway. The, the other thing I would just say is, and maybe we'll, we'll talk about this over the next couple of weeks, but there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between this idea when it comes to historic preservation, that we, that we're laissez-faire capitalists, that we should stay out of the free market and let the free market do its own thing, but, but when it comes to these incentives, clearly we're not laissez-faire capitalists. We, we have a hand, and we put our hand on the scales all the time, three or four times here this morning, and so I, I just want to call, we'll, we'll return to that over the next couple of weeks, but if we can, if we can intervene to, to make something happen, if you believe that this is making something happen, then maybe we can do that in other areas as well, that we don't currently, thanks.
Thank you, any other comments? I forget, did we have a motion and a second on this yet?
No, we don't.
Okay, I'll entertain. Okay, got a motion and a second, any other discussion on item AK? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to 2. Okay, now we'll turn to AM.
So on AM, we have Ron Bradshaw with Colony Developers to present the project.
Uh, thank you very much, I'm here to request a million dollars for the third phase of Page Woodson, there are a series of, of slides here that just let you go, go quickly through those, but this is the third phase, the first phase started in 2015, when we acquired the Page Woodson School and renovated it, it is now 128 affordable units. The second phase was a market rate that's 81, market rate units is complete, this third phase would be 114 apartment units. We are requesting a million dollars to allocate 34 of those units, or 30% of the, of the units to workforce, that would be, that would be a, a, a term of 20 years, and there's a fourth and a fifth phase that will be starting, the first, this, the total cost of the third phase is $16.9 million. So far, the investment in Phase 1 and 2 is just right at $40 million. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
This is actually our second allocation of affordable housing funds from the GOLT, and you remember the 2017 prop, or, uh, bond program that a portion of the GOLT was set aside for affordable housing, 10 million, and so this is our second allocation of affordable housing funds.
Can, can you remind me the threshold of the affordable housing on ink, is it, it's income? Can you remind me the, the threshold to qualify for affordable housing, what income?
Uh, yes, for, for 70%, there, there's a HUD, there's a HUD schedule that, that we follow, 15% of these will be at 70% of the, of the AMI, just one second, let me get that schedule.
So it's, it's 70% of median income?
That's right.
These units, seven, no, 34 units will be at either 70% or 80% of area median income for this third phase.
Okay, but what is area, I've asked you 20 times, Karen, do you know what median income is?
It, it, it's a calculation that HUD does, and Ron was trying to find the schedule, they publish a schedule every year.
Now, do you know about what the number is?
It's about 50, it's about $55,000 in this area, $55,000 a year, so...
For a family of four.
For a family of four, right.
Okay.
So if you, if you make more than...
About 40,000.
70% of the, of the median income, you would not qualify for these, you have to make under 70% for, for half of the 34, and under 80% of the median income to qualify, you have to make less than that for the 80%.
Got it, thank you.
And then the rest of them will be market rate, market rate units.
Okay.
And I guess our, our desire here is, I mean, we're responding to what we understood was, you know, the public desire, we could obviously do all these as market rate, and wood, this doesn't keep us from doing the project, but it keeps us from, from allocating a certain number of them for, for workforce.
Right.
For a lower, lower rate.
And is there a transit line next to this?
There's a bus line, on force, there's a bus line, but we're working to, to increase that, it's needed, in that area.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ron? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second for item 7 AM, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes our marathon consent docket today, brings us to the concurrence docket, where we have items A through L.
Move the items.
I fell down, I'm like, oh, yes.
Don't give up yet.
Move those.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion on any of those items?
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment on A3, this is a, we're going to hire a consultant to study removing silt from lake overhulser to increase the capacity, I, I think this is a good idea, the, I've gotten numerous, numerous constituents over the last few years have asked me, why do we not remove the silt? And normally my question is a vague, will it cost too much? So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing this to show how much it actually will cost, and to see what the actual benefits will be for that cost, so I appreciate the Water Utilities Trust doing this.
Okay, any other comments, discussion, questions? All right, seeing none, we've got a motion and a second, we'll cast our votes, passes unanimously. We'll also welcome Councilman Greenwell, whose birthday it is today, whose...
Birthday!
Birthday gift to himself was to miss the first hour of council.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now on page 22 of your printed agenda, item nine, items requiring separate votes, item 9A1 was previously deferred, that brings us to 9A2, this is at 201 Northeast 13th Street, moving from R3 to 01, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, Ms. Francis, did anyone sign up?
No, ma'am.
All right, and I know we have, the applicant is here, and I spoke with him, and he told me, and promised me he would be a good neighbor, so with that being said, I ask that we move for approval.
Second.
Okay, great, so this has, this particular one has a good neighbor clause, that's good.
It has a good neighbor clause, you know, you have to be a good neighbor if you're going to be in the neighborhood, and this is to permit office development, and he's going to have a law office.
All right, very good, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A3, 10801, West Garnett, from I1 to I2, also Councilwoman Nice?
As you see, we are busy in Ward 7, and this one is to permit a auto dealership, and we're moving this from I1 to I2, do we have any? All right, and with that, I ask that we move for approval.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. 9A4, this is at 13640 North Council Road, moving from R1 to PUD 1696, Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, this is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone, and it was unanimously passed at the Planning Commission, not aware of any protest, so I'd move the item.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. This brings us to 9A5, this is at 1305 Northwestern Avenue, moving from SPUD 972 and R3 to SPUD 1092, Councilwoman Salyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I think we probably have had some folks that sign up.
We've had three sign up.
Good, and we do have the applicant here, so if we could hear from the applicant to begin with, and then we'll hear from our folks.
Good morning, thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, which is OnQ, and also with me is the OnQ team, as well as Mohammed Khan, who is the civil engineer for the project, and BJ Hawkins, who is the traffic engineer for this project. As the mayor said, this is a spud that is coming to you with recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, it was a lengthy Planning Commission discussion, some three hours, I believe, just on this topic, in which there was a lot of, I think, discussion amongst the Planning Commission about previous cases that have, that have happened with OnQ, and what we expect to see at a, at a location like this, when we're dealing with a gas station. So first, I think it's important to note kind of the, the lay of the land surrounding it. What we're asking for is a, a spud, that is a modified commercial spud with a limited number of uses that would only support the gas station that you see before you. North of our site, although developed, is Zone Straight C4. East of our site is developed as a gas station, and is Zone Straight C4. Portions of property south of us are Zone Straight C4. When you look at this stretch of Western from 13th moving to the south, it is the largest stretch of C4 zoning that I believe we have in Oklahoma City. Now, as this council is aware, C4 zoning no longer exists by way of new applications, it only remains on the books because of relics like we have around us, to, to show what uses and what setbacks and things like that are required. So what you have here is a very significant stretch of very intense commercial zoning. Prior to ever filing an application, OnQ set out to, to go meet with the neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that is very active, I'm talking about the Classen-Tinpen neighborhood, they had multiple meetings. Of note, Jessica Thompson, who couldn't be here today, but the council's probably aware of her, as she has been a zealous advocate for the Classen-Tinpen neighborhood, she's president of that neighborhood association, she was quoted in the Journal Record, and in the Daily Oklahoman, as being supportive of this project, and despite the length of the Planning Commission meeting, lasted till 6:18 PM, stuck it out in the back with her two children, just so she could come to this podium and, and give her support to the project as the president of the Classen-Tinpen. She couldn't be here today, she has a, a work obligation, but I, I do think it's important that the council understand that she is supportive, and, like I said, took her time with her children to be here at Planning Commission. So again, OnQ met with the neighbors time and time again, there was a total of, I think, five meetings, and as the council's aware, when you continue to have meetings, what happens is, the people that are supportive and the people that don't have any problems with it tend to drop off. It's the people that have concerns or complaints that will continue to show up, and so by the time we had the last meeting, I was actually still surprised to see that there was a, there was a mix of, of people that were both against it, but also several people that were supportive in that meeting. So I think it's important to look at the site specifics and understand why we think that we have a product here that will be able to operate and exist in this area without creating operational impacts to the neighborhood. So of note, when you look at our site, which is, is right here, and then you look to what would be our west, what you'll notice is, there's a significant grade differential. So our site will sit down 10 feet. What you'll have as you move from our property owners to the west that we abut, so this is their house, and this is all to scale, you'll move approximately 20 feet is what their side yard setback is, and then you'll have a wall, and what the spud requires is that it be a masonry wall, a masonry wall of eight feet is what we originally had in the spud. At the Planning Commission, one of the neighbors who is, is here today, and you'll hear from, requested that we make that a 10-foot wall, we agreed to do it. So there will be now a 10-foot wall at our shared property line. After you get past the 10-foot wall, you'll have a 15-foot setback and buffer that will still be at grade, and in that 15 feet, you will have significant landscaping, you'll have trees that will be double planted, they're required to be three-inch caliper at the time of planting, so you'll have a more mature and a taller tree at the time of planting, rather than a really small tree that might take 20 years to provide the necessary blockage that, that they seek. Then you drop down 10 feet, then you move over 70 feet before you get to the building, and still, within that 70 feet, you'll see significant landscaping. It's important to note that the landscaping that we have in the spud is overall three times the required number of points that the city requires, as it relates to evergreen plantings, we are 10 times the required number of points. One of the questions that always comes up anytime you have a use that has a drive-through where it abuts single-family residential, is what kind of impact does that create? One of the most obnoxious things about drive-throughs are those speaker boxes, they never work right, they're loud, they're crackly, speaker is not permitted here, OnQ doesn't use speakers in the drive-through, specifically in the spud, we say that no speaker boxes are permitted. So what you'll have, if you're going through the drive-through, is a car that will come through the drive-through, the window would be right here on the south side of the building, and you'd have a one-on-one, face-to-face conversation without the, the, the voice being amplified. Of note, we have no freestanding signage, so what you'll notice in these elevations here is, rather than freestanding signs, all the signs are the attached signs. So instead of freestanding signs along the frontage where you might expect to see signage, we have increased the landscaping. So trading signs for landscaping, I think, is a positive thing, especially in the core, especially along this stretch of Classen and Western, in which we're hoping to see, you know, additional redevelopment. One of the big questions and, and discussion points at the Planning Commission, and with our meetings with various Planning Commission members and council members, was traffic. As the council's aware, traffic studies are no longer required, we passed the Impact Fee Ordinance, I think it was two years ago, and so traffic studies aren't required at the outset, but understanding what the issues were going to be here, I think everyone on council that travels this area would agree that as we sit here today, that intersection is problematic at best, where Western and Classen come together, and 13th Street crosses, and so we had a traffic study performed by, by TEC that came up with a series of recommendations. At the time of Planning Commission, the charge with their vote was to go get with Public Works, make sure Public Works agreed with our improvements that we contemplate, and so we set out to do that after the Planning Commission meeting. We had numerous meetings with not only Public Works, but with Planning, to make sure that our concept aligned with any future plans for Public Works, any future plans that Planning has as it relates to the, the bike pass that they're hoping that will traverse this area, and so what Public Works and us have come up with, one of the major concerns that we heard from the neighbors was, after traveling southbound on Classen, you can right now utilize what, what's being referred to as a slip lane, and immediately jump onto Western without slowing down, and so you can pick up speed, in essence, as you're traveling through the neighborhood. So what you'll notice here on this plan is, Public Works has requested, and we agree, we're going to close and eliminate that slip lane. So now if you're coming down Classen and you wish to get onto Western, you will be forced to continue south to the, the signalized intersection and take a right, well, that right is going to force you to slow down as you enter the neighborhood. This is all already city right-of-way, so no additional right-of-way will need to be acquired, OnQ is going to fund these improvements 100%, and so with that, staff, Public Works staff was supportive. In addition, after the meeting, Planning staff, Mr. Jeff Butler, asked that we provide some additional width here along Western, again, for that, that future bike system. Mr. Khan at SMC was able to revise the site plan to give them the necessary width that they wanted in this area, and so now Planning is supportive of the way that the site plan now lays out because of our ability to do that. So what we have, we believe, is a site that will provide, I believe, a stabilizing force. Part of the concern that we heard from neighbors time and time again was the ability of transients to traverse through the neighborhood, a lot of the problem generates at the gas station that's immediately east of us. It, it has been a problem for quite some time, it's, it's my belief that that gas station, once this opens, if it's approved... It's my belief that that gas station, once this opens, if it's approved, will no longer exist. OnQ, if you visited an OnQ, I think you'd agree, it's a site that's well-lit. It's a site that feels safe and secure. The problems that exist at other gas stations simply don't exist at OnQ's. So in this application, also, you'll note that west of our site, there is an alley that is open. If anybody's been through that alley, it is an aged alley. It is very difficult to travel unless you have an SUV or a truck. OnQ has agreed to repave, at their own cost, to city standards, the balance of the alley from the western portion of our site all the way to Klein, to the point where any improved alley exists as an effort to help the neighborhood. One of the other questions that was raised at Planning Commission was the hours of operation on the drive-through. So my client did agree to limit the hours of operation of the drive-through to 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and that has now been put into the SPUD document as well. The concern was raised that perhaps some of these uses, although are acceptable in the confines of an OnQ, but independently might create problems. And so we've modified the SPUD again in Section 1 so that all the uses listed within the SPUD are, in a quote, accessory uses, so that it can't be independent uses. In addition, one of the, again, to traffic. So the initial staff report that came out had an incorrect number that related to the daily trips that they believed to be attributable to this gas station. It was 8,600 daily trips, is what the staff report stated. The staff report was using an incorrect code from the traffic manual. The code they were using was the trips calculated from a gas station that's associated with a grocery store. So if you think of like a neighborhood market that might have an associated gas station out of the front, that is the trip count generated, because the trip count is really attributable to not only the gas station, but also the grocery store. The correct trip count in the manual is really 3,500 trips. Now, what I can tell you is even the 3,500 trips is high. OnQ has numerous stores across the Metroplex and across the state, and what they tell me is the actual data is somewhere around 2,500 trips. So what you will see, I think, from one of the protesters is a PowerPoint that references this idea of 8,600 trips per day. So I think it's important to note that that's just simply incorrect. That's almost four times the actual amount that OnQ sees at their stores. And finally, I want to walk through a series of slides that you should have had handed out. The notion was raised at Planning Commission and through letters that perhaps the ability of a gas station to operate next to a single-family home is simply incompatible, and it can't work. And so what we did was, we looked at not just gas stations, but specifically OnQ stores as they exist in the Metroplex and where they are in relation to single-family homes. And so as you flip through this, you'll note that it's common for an OnQ to operate right next to a single-family neighborhood. And perhaps the best example might be within the OKC tab, specifically the last one, and it's got a Bates number, OnQ-OKC06. And there, what you'll see is the store at 10th and Portland. And it's at the southwest corner of 10th and Portland. And that store is closer to the neighborhood than we are here. It doesn't have the landscaping that we propose here, and it doesn't have the grade differential that we have here. The reason I want to point this store out is, when this store completed development and was operating, they were presented an award by the abutting neighborhood, some form of a beautification award, because of the positive impact that the OnQ has had to the neighborhood. And so time and time again, in this market, OnQ has shown an inability to operate as a good neighbor and provide, again, a stabilizing force. Of note, the Ward 1 Planning Commission member took about five or 10 minutes to give a brief discussion of his, I guess, his work on an OnQ that he believes he made a mistake on, specifically at the store at Wilshire and Northwest Highway. Of note, that was probably eight years ago or so, maybe six years ago. And it was a massive fight. These chambers for both Planning Commission and City Council were full. And the Planning Commission, in fact, in that case, had not even made a recommendation because they couldn't come to it. Mike Hensley made the motion to deny. And all these years later, he has consistently said he made a mistake. Once the OnQ was open and operating, it has been a wonderful stabilizing force. Some of the gas stations that existed in that area that were problematic have closed, and you've seen redevelopment that has been beneficial to the area. North of Northwest Highway, you've seen an old gas station go out and a wonderful new bank building. There was a strip center to the west that had subpar tenants. Once OnQ opened, the owner of that strip center reinvested in it, cleaned it out, and now has a wonderful set of tenants. And so Mr. Hensley went to great lengths to say, you know, he had got it wrong. All the same things that we heard all those years ago, we're hearing now, and it just simply hasn't proven to be true, and in fact, it's proven to be the opposite. So again, this is coming to you with a recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission. We believe that we have, you know, modified and modified and modified, and now have a SPUD that is whittled down to the point that it should be something that is operating in a manner that is consistent with the neighborhood and provides a benefit to the neighborhood. When you look at the core of this city, there are no gas stations of the quality of an OnQ. You have to go, I think, to 23rd and Santa Fe, to the OnQ and Councilwoman Nys's ward, to find a quality gas station. So when you're in the core, there are a lack of these types of services. So we believe that this will provide those types of quality services that I think the core is deserving of. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've got a question on the 10-foot wall.
Yes.
Is the 10-foot wall built on the old grade, or is part of that the retaining wall on the grade change there?
So the 10-foot wall will be on the existing grade, and then 15 feet further east, and then it'll be the 10-foot retaining wall. So in terms of line of sight, you can imagine it's going to be a, you know, fairly steep and 20 feet because of that 10-foot wall. So the 10-foot wall will be at grade, and then you'll drop down 15 feet later to 10 feet below.
Thank you.
So are there, are there, there are two homes to be demolished?
No, it's, sure. And that's another thing that I believe the opposition will say that's simply not true. Neither of the homes will be demolished. One of them, my client is working with Positively Paseo to donate it. They have, I believe, identified another site and will be able to move it. My client got estimates on moving those homes, had professionals that are engaged in that business come out, review the home to make sure that structurally they were sound enough to be moved. Both of them are able to be moved. And it's anticipated that both of them will be moved rather than demolished.
Move the whole home?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and those are Chodo homes, correct?
I'm sorry?
Are they Chodo homes?
I'm not familiar with the term. Can you explain the term to me?
Well, were they used with strong initiative?
No.
Initiatives, or?
And that was stated that it was at the Planning Commission, and it absolutely was not.
And is, so is there, is there an alley that's going to be closed?
Yes, as it exists within this site.
Can you show me that?
Mm-hmm. So the existing alley that runs through the site is right here. That will be closed. However, the alley west of our site will remain, and at OnQ's cost, they will go repave that.
Any other questions for David? We'll have further time for discussion. We've got some citizens as well. Anything now? Okay. Valerie Wigman? Valerie, if you wouldn't mind probably correctly stating your name and your address as well, for the record.
Yes, Valerie Wigman, 1128 Northwest 12th Street. I just wanted to first make a few corrections. There were actually, actually only two meetings after all of the residents had been notified. Three of those happened, or three of the five happened before we were notified. So the biggest one was actually right before the Planning Staff Meeting. And only, like, only three of the, the first three that had happened were not posted in an event in Facebook by the NA. It was just the NA. So the Neighborhood Association were the only ones there to be at those first three meetings. Now, I want to also talk about the fact that there are, there's not enough residential property to even constitute 50% to, you know, dictate a quorum here. And I think that's regrettable, because most of the residential property owners have protested and have documented protests, all but five, which are resident, or which are rental properties. It's regrettable because we, with something that affects the neighbor and the residents so much, he says 2,500 trips. He's comparing to our suburban OnQ's. This will be the first OnQ in such an urban setting. So we don't know what the trips will be, probably something a lot more. The staff planning report reported 8,000 round trips, so I guess 4,000 just, right, just trips, which means that that would be about 333 per hour to our little neighborhood, five a minute. Okay, so just to put that in perspective, the cost-to-benefit ratio is all cost to the residents and all benefit to OnQ. So I, I mean, I know that they're doing things to help buffer that, but if any of y'all have had the chance to read the staff report, it's pretty damning. That very last statement before they outline their five technical evaluations basically says that, yeah, there are things that developments like this can do to mitigate this kind of thing, and the things that they outline in that report, but not in this particular instance, because it's so urban. And that, that's kind of a problem. Hopefully, y'all got a chance to read that, because there are some really great tidbits in there. I'm not going to rehash it. But we do have, and so we know that this is probably going to go through. I get that. Our only ask as residents, as most of our residents being completely against this build, our only ask is to leave off of the, leave the drive-through off of the SPUD. I think it's unrealistic to think that anyone's going to not go to OnQ just because there's no drive-through. And I actually personally went to three of the OnQ's drive-throughs up near Western and Memorial, all in a day. I bought my buffalo chicken tornadoes, which I love, but they, actually, I wasn't able to. But I did get coffee, and the service was great. The young people in the windows did tell me, when I asked what they sold the most of, it was the top three in every single location was beer, tobacco, and soda. I asked if there was ever anyone that got milk. The answers were sometimes, every now and then, and sometimes. And I know that that's something that had come up in the planning, the planning meeting. I feel like it's such a small ask, and I feel like it really would do, it'd go a really long way in making this more of a happy medium and finding a compromise here. I feel like our Planning Commission was remiss in not passing the SPUD through without requiring the technical evaluations outlined in the staff report, specifically one and five, to leave the drive-through off, which is what they said needed to happen if this was to be approved, despite their denial of, their recommendation to deny. And the fifth was, the fifth technical evaluation was to reduce the hours of operation as a 24-hour operation will have an impact of some kind, whether noise, or light pollution, or smell, on the residential property owners surrounding. So all I'm asking is that we come to a better compromise here. And I think that's doable, if we, if our council members will stick to their guns. I think it's really doable, and I think it would go a long way in making sure that the residents who have, like I said, all but five documented protests, it would make them feel a lot more comfortable with this build. Of course, we would prefer, if you didn't vote it through. I know that's unrealistic, but I respectfully ask that you consider this seriously. And remember that although in suburban and middle-class areas, these kinds of developments can have great statistic, statistically, great impact on the surrounding residential properties, it's actually the reverse in lower-income areas statistically. So please let me, let me know if you have any questions at all?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I want to go back to this. So the, the city previously, in coming up with a strategy to revitalize the neighborhood, partnered with Positively Paseo to invest in remodeling homes, two of which, whether they're demolished or the house is moved, that, that site, that was part of the strategy, right? To re, to renovate those homes was part of the city's investment and strategy in revitalizing?
The Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, yes, sir, it was. The federal government's put over $1 million in the Classen-Tinpin area trying to develop it into a stronger neighborhood. And actually, the, the house it is, was proposed originally to be torn down. Even though the residents are not, did not use any funding assistance or payment assistance, it actually was partially federally funded. And I have, I'm going to get the documentation today. I have, it's a 10-day, probably for a FOIA, so I've got to get the documentation for that. I didn't know about it earlier, I would have, but I've got it on good authority from someone who worked at Positively Paseo that that was the case. So I wasn't going to bring it up because I didn't have the documentation yet in my hands, but that is a concern of mine. For us to have invested so much federal, federal funding into this neighborhood under this neighborhood initiative, and me, myself benefiting, because I, my house was a Positively Paseo home, is, it's frustrating, to say the least. For me particularly, I, I mean, I've lived here for eight years. I've lived in that home for over four years now. And I bought that home because Oklahoma City has so much flavor. It's a real gem. And partially, it's partially like that because Oklahoma City and you guys have worked so hard to keep, to support small businesses by keeping large foreign, I guess, extra-state chains out of our, this, certain areas of the city. And that's really, it's encouraged, like Plaza and like Paseo, Automobile Alley, Midtown, all of these areas, that, that, you can contribute that growth directly to that fact. And I know that OnQ is an Oklahoma chain. However, it's, it is huge. And I don't know that it fits in with this, you know, our landscape, but especially not in this neighborhood with its size. But Technical Evaluation 5, it suggests that it can be curbed by having less pumps. Like I said, I feel like it's a little greedy to insist on a drive-through when you have 16 fueling positions.
So when, the two homes that would be moved to allow a drive-through, were they, they were already renovated through the Positively Paseo program?
I only know for sure of one, the one, on the, on 12th Street. I don't know about the other one.
And this might be a question for OnQ, but are you aware of OnQ taking single-family homes, moving them or demolishing them to expand in OnQ at any of these other sites in the city?
I've never heard of that, but, I mean, like I said, I don't know for sure.
Is this, David, would this be the first time that that's happened? Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, thank you.
Yes, there had, Mr. Griffith says that there has been another. Let me clear it, though. I just confirmed it with your Planning Director. There were no federal SNI funds whatsoever in either house. I'm not sure who she talked to on good authority, but it's not accurate. No SNI funds whatsoever in either of those two houses.
What about CHODO funds?
My understanding is there was, there was no funds. One was a market-rate, brand-new build, the one on the south. And the one on the north, I'm not sure, but I think the, I'll let Aubrey. There was no SNI funds.
Aubrey McDermott, Planning Director?
Hi, thanks. Just, it is a complicated thing, because through the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, we partner with our community housing development organizations to do infill construction. I think where the confusion is, is that the federal funds that we use to do homes through SNI can be done through us with a CHODO, but these two homes were not done with our federal funds. They were done by the CHODO themselves. So sometimes private developers will come in and do their own infill construction on their own dime. Sometimes other partners that we work with do their own projects. So the question being asked is, is it an SNI neighborhood? Yes. Do we work with CHODOs and SNI to do infill? Yes. Were any federal funds used in those two homes? No.
But indirectly, I mean, my understanding of the CHODO program is you have funds, the neighborhoods renovate the house, then they sell it, then you take that money, and you, and you, the dominoes just keep going. So there was an initial investment somewhere, and then that money gets invested into these homes to renovate them.
Yeah, and it's my understanding there's a separation between some projects and others. So for these projects, there was a separation to where the federal funding was not used for those two, for that one home. The other home, I believe, was privately renovated.
By Positively Paseo?
I, I don't think that the CHODO was involved in the second home, but I'm not quite sure. I think it was just one of the two homes.
So Positively Paseo did one of the two?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And it's worth noting that On Q is paying market rate to acquire both properties. So, I mean, I'm not sure of what funding sources or what loans made, but On Q, as a willing buyer, contracted with willing seller to acquire the two sites.
Was the, the Neighborhood Association president that you had mentioned in the first, was she involved in that transaction in any way?
No.
No.
She doesn't own either of those homes.
She a broker or anything like that?
She's a broker, but she, I mean, she doesn't owe either home.
She has a financial interest in the...
I, I don't know that she was a broker on either of these homes. She was not. So, to say she has a financial interest is simply inaccurate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we still have more citizens to be heard, so why don't we move on to Dylan Reader? And Mr. Reader, when you reach the mic, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Dylan Reader. I own the property at 1330 North Klassen, which is the directly straight east from the proposed On Q site. My property is an office building. I've also got the, the land south of my building to 12th Street. I'm here today to express my, my approval, personal approval for this On Q project. I've had my building for, going on 15 years. Back in my younger days, I think I could probably hit a, hit a seven iron to the middle of this proposed site. It's probably a five iron now, but I'm literally look straight west and I see where the, the On Q proposed site. I've seen some, there's several things that I'm, I'm particularly, you know, interested in. No one's ever asked me what I really feel like the best option would be for that particular property site, whether it be a restaurant, whether it be apartments, whatever, convenient, a very nice convenience store chain, whatever. But there are some things that I, but I can tell you right now that, that an On Q location, that that particular site would be, if not at the top of the list, a very, very close second if it wasn't at the top of the list. And there's several reasons for that. Like I said, I've owned that property, my property, for 15 years. I've seen a lot of crazy things. I mean, you know, as far as, I've, I've had an attempted robbery on myself, my cleaning crew has, has been robbed, or attempted robbery, you know, going out to the, the trash bins. There's, I mean, it's the gateway to Oklahoma City, you know, and that particular, that, I'm not saying an On Q is going to solve any of the transient problem that you get kind of bad, but it will certainly help. I've got a, you know, the darker the dark, the brighter the light. And I feel like that having a, a business like that will definitely curb some of the things that you see on a daily basis. I mean, last week, I had the police in, I had a guy in my conference room, and I couldn't get him to leave. And three weeks before that, I had on the east side of my building, I've got a homeless people that, and look, it's cold, I realize everybody's got to stay warm. I'm, I'm not saying I don't have a heart, but I'm, at the end of the day, I've got, I mean, I don't have to wait until it gets a little warmer to, to repaint my building, but they're starting to bonfire to stay warm. So, I mean, there are things that happen. I think that On Q is, is a, is a very reputable company. I grew up in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and before it was On Q, I believe, I mean, it was Jack Griffin's, whatever, I don't know, some, Jack Griffiths was the original On Q, and I think maybe they started the On Q, but in Stillwater, it was, I'm going to date myself, but this is 45 years ago. And even then, Jack Griffiths were really upscale convenience store chains. I say chains, there were, because I can only remember two or three, but to this day, if you go to Stillwater, they're very, very well-kept, and they're still very large, you know, very nice facilities. Nothing comparison to what the On Q's are in this area, but they're still very, very nice. So, going back 45 years, I, you know, I want something that goes in over that piece of property that's going to be well-maintained for years to come. And I, I definitely think that On Q is, fits that mold. I guess the other thing, too, is for 15 years, I've watched the development. You've all have done a great job with the downtown area. I mean, it's, it's an awesome job, you've done an awesome job. But it's been very, it's been more than slow on the northwest side. I mean, more than slow, it's a snail's pace. In fact, it's, it's, besides Sunbeam and the Catholic Charities Building, which are great facilities, by the way, and there's really little or no development. And I will say that the Sunbeam apartment, I've got a couple of properties in Mesa Park, and before they moved over off of Western, they had, the Sunbeam home was right square dab in the middle of Mesa Park. And it, and, you know, they, it worked, I mean, my whole point is, is it wasn't the ideal thing for Sunbeam and Mesa Park, but it worked, and they were good neighbors. And it was good for the community. And so, anyway, I do believe that having a, an On Q, or whatever other business, but a particular business like an On Q will be a catalyst to help that part of the city that needs a push or a shove. I really believe this might be the straw that breaks the camel's back to some really nice development. There's a lot, I mean, it doesn't take a rocket science to drive down Klassen or Western and see all those blank, those, those lots that are empty. And like I said, I have seen, I could, I've seen some crazy things. I know that, I mean, I'm not going to, I speak for myself, I've seen some, some, there's a convenience store that's directly across from my, my building. I think the gentleman's here, you'll probably hear from him. I'm not trying to run down, he's anybody's business, but there's a different kind of clientele that's, that, that is served by that. There's some things that, you see and go on, and the, and the folks that hang out there on the side of the building, that that simply will not be the case at On Q. And I say that because I can go, I'll drive out of my way to get to On Q, and I think that those locations are going to be the same kind of location as proposed, proposed here. So, I, anyway, I, I am, I'm a, I'm a huge proponent for it, and I think that this, in the end, will be a, something that will be a, a benefit for the community, not only my business, but for the surrounding area. And I, I just hope you approve it. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenna Johnson? Jenna, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address here at the center podium. Oh, and you have AV?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Holt. My name is Jenna Johnson. I live at 1118 Northwest 13th Street in Oklahoma City, which is directly next door to the proposed spud. If you can go to the, the first slide, I have a couple pictures just to put this in perspective. So, here's the area. I am the home that's on the white dotted line on the north side of the spud, the northwest side of the spud. The two houses that would be taken as part of this spud and that are currently zoned residential are the ones there in the northwest corner and then the southwest corner. The southwest corner, one being the brand-new, three-year-old Positively Paseo home that they partnered with the SNI, the SNI program of Oklahoma City to build three years ago. And then the one that is in the northwest corner, that one was a 100-plus-year-old home that was completely gutted and renovated and just completed last year. And if you go to the next slides, it gives you a context of, of those homes. These are not low-income homes. This is an exciting renaissance that's happening in the Classen-Tinpin area, and this would be one of the homes that'd be taken for a drive-through. This is the Positively Paseo home that would be taken for, in that, that specific area, the drive-through placed there, and then the, the brand-new, recently renovated home that was in the previous picture. This is the flyer from oklahomacity.gov Mr. Shidib was asking about. It says here, this is straight off the Oklahoma City website, Positively Paseo is pleased to partner with SNI in an effort to revitalize the C, the Classen-Tinpin neighborhood by building new homes on long vacant lots and rebuilding long neglected historic homes. The house with the flag in the top left is the one that will be taken and rezoned.
You keep using that word. I just want to clarify, you said taken?
Yes.
That tends to imply that we've exercised them in a domain or something. We're not involved in this project.
No, taken by the approval of the spud, right?
Purchased, right? I mean, they were purchased by On Q, correct? I just want to understand, I don't want to get confused.
Well, previously, they were to be demolished as part of the, as part of the plan. What's being stated is that this particular home will be moved, so whatever language you want to, you know...
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. You can use whatever language you want. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, that's where the drive-through will go, however you want to, however you, you know, whatever linguistic you want, you want to use.
All right.
That's where...
I understand now. Thank you very much.
Yes. And if you can go to the next slide. Okay, this is our home. We bought it two years ago for $395,000. It was completely gutted. It's a 100-plus-year-old home, completely gutted. The only thing that remains are the floors and the outside, the brick. And the house to the left here in the picture, that is where the drive-through will go. And that's within about 60 feet of the side of our home. As mentioned before, nearly every single resident within a 300-foot radius has filed a protest. We don't have enough residential to, to get the 50%, and we understand that this is probably going to happen. However, our one request is that the drive-through not be placed. And in fact, if you look at a PUD application and the regulations on that, in section 9.14, the, and I realize this is a spud, but under a PUD, it states that no drive-through can be placed within 150 feet of residential. That's on the face of a PUD application. And so, why would homes not be protected as part of the spud? Our alley's also being taken, but our, our one ask for compromise is, is no drive-through. The two other close On Q's in this area, in the downtown core, do not have drive-throughs, the one on 23rd, and then the one on May and I-44. So, it's not necessary for their development. Questions?
Are you getting the, the PUD restriction on drive-throughs?
It's, it's straight on the face. Section 9.14, on the face of a PUD application, and then also in, in the ordinances. I can read it straight for you, and you pull it up on okc.gov.
Well, can Aubrey, can you?
Says that, "Under 9.14 setback regulations, the following uses shall not be permitted within 150 feet of residentially zoned or used property." And there are five uses.
And, and I think that's the existing zoning that's in place for the PUD that was negotiated prior to this rezoning request. I think those were the terms that had been established before, when this was going to be a different development. Is that correct?
Aubrey, that's not a standing requirement for any PUD. That was one specific negotiation.
This is on the face of a spud. This is a spud, not this spud application, a spud application.
Yeah.
Section 9.14.
That is...
Step-back requirements.
That is what applies on this site today, under the zoning that was previously approved.
But the next question, is there anything in the ordinance that speaks to drive-through, step-back to a residential?
I don't think that that was a use that was permitted in the previous SPUD.
To answer your specific question, no. There is nothing. That was a specifically negotiated element of the current PUD that's in place. The PUD ordinance that exists in the codes does not have that provision.
Then why does the application of a PUD and the regulation stated in the face of a PUD?
So, you're, you're confusing the PUD on this specific piece of dirt with the PUD ordinance that exists in chapter 59?
I pulled this straight off of oklahomacity.gov.
Correct.
Not on this specific spud, or this, or the spud before it.
So, the chapter 59 doesn't have a section nine point that you're referring to? That is a, that is a PUD or a spud that you're referring to?
No.
Okay.
So, the, the previous PUD said that you couldn't have a drive-through within 150 feet of the homes?
Yes.
And so, how close would it be now?
60 feet.
Okay.
From the side of my home. We've measured it.
From this, from the side of her home, it's 91.7 feet. There's a 20-foot yard setback.
From her property line?
From her property line, at the 10-foot wall, which she requested, it's 71.7 feet.
Okay.
So, you knew, and you add the 20-foot setback, it's almost 92 feet.
You did negotiate with On Q, did you not?
Absolutely, in fact.
To get the wall and to get a parking space?
We didn't specifically negotiate with them, no. In the, in the planning committee meeting that went on for several hours, and there were lots of protest, as, as was in the neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of protest as well, and that was one of the, that was one of the items that was placed as part of the, as part of the SPUD. But our request was that there be no drive-through. That was our big, our, our only request, is no, no drive-through there.
There is, however, a drive-through at the Brahms, just up the street. It has a loudspeaker box.
That you can get milk at, that, that you can buy milk through the Brahms? Is that what you're asking?
There's a drive-through. There is a drive-through there, existing, within two blocks of this location. Just pointing that out. There is a drive-through. It's used frequently.
Any other questions?
It's not a betting, I don't think it would be a betting residential.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson? We do have one more citizen to be heard. Okay. Thank you. Michael Washington?
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Ladies and gentlemen of that particular neighborhood, hold on, baby, wait, let me tell you why. We're a big business. We're corporate America. What we say goes. It doesn't matter that we're going to negatively affect your community. I'm an outsider, and I'm going to come and tell you how to destroy businesses. That's a problem to you. I got all the answers. Isn't that something? Let On Q tell you how to run your community. Let On Q tell you how to close businesses? Because in the first place, to my understanding, from my relationship with understanding On Q, while it is a very lucrative business, it seems to me that it also appears to be bulldogging. Because again, as this gentleman just stated, Mr. Box here, that there is a traumatic situation with a business, a service station in that community that has a problem, well, all of that is going to disappear, as he stated, when On Q is established there. The residents have already stated their concerns who live in that area, that they don't want this On Q to come because of possible noise, the problems at night when people try to sleep, as well as smells of fumes coming from gas and what have you. And I can understand that dilemma. Let me also say that I normally don't step outside the primitives of Ward 7, but in this case, it appears to me that these people need someone of a political nature like mine to help them file a lawsuit if it's necessary to delay, if nothing else. Because the biggest problem and concern with a lot of our people today is that they don't know they have the avenue or resources of a civil litigation, which would delay anything until a final decision is reached. You have your right for your voices to be heard. Now, according to this young lady who first spoke, there were several meetings held regarding, in the community, regarding the On Q to be built there in their neighborhood. According to this young lady, two such meetings were held that they were know, they knew of, and three were clandestinely held without their realizing that that had been. That being the case, it seems like to me someone is not trying to be transparent here, but at the same time, I actually trying to slide in and avoid the monopoly over what the citizens desire and want. After all the years these people live here in this neighborhood, they don't want such a business to come in such a small area of economic development. Now, they also do not want people coming in and telling them and bringing in an influx of transients, maybe? Especially with this lady who just spoke, being so close to her home, and you having a drive-through, can you imagine how many people you're allowed to be hanging around there? And again, I agree wholeheartedly with that. Now, in closing as well, this, yeah, the lady spoke, first spoke, says there will be about 333 people an hour to visit On Q. Well, that being the case, it seems like to me that is certainly something that's going to drive in an avalanche of people that normally would not be in this area. And all for the sake of big business, big money, corporate America, doing what we want to do, slash, unquote, unquote. Let me say, even the lady, even the gentleman who spoke and said he's in support of this On Q, even stated himself, it would be secondary to another important issue. ONQ, even stated himself, it would be secondary to another important issue that he would prefer to be there. So it sounds like to me, not quite no disrespect to him, not quite settled on the ONQ being placed there in his neighborhood by his businesses. And did he also say again, obviously piggybacking on what the gentleman stated, "There is a business I'm not going to speak about that would be cleaned up if ONQ was to come in." Was that staged? Can't say. Let me say, the lady who just spoke, spoke about historical buildings, historical homes in her community. Now, everybody knows that big business should not be able to destroy historical landmarks that this lady spoke about. Why? And not only this, we have what you said, the city partnering with Positive Paseo, y'all better watch out, because Michael Washington clearly, you know, kind of keep up with things, he listens and he writes down. The, the City of Oklahoma City partnering with Positive Paseo to preserve residential homes in that area, but now, the money spent on that is going to be almost wasted, I guess these people are going to buy them out, to demolish it for big business. We should take a second look at this, ladies and gentlemen of this jury. We should not let these people come in. There are many other places that they could put, put this ONQ. And with that, let me say one last thing. This is the good one.
It's the lady that knows.
See there, I, I, come on. Okay. They, they should be invested in these homes to put people in them and not being, trying to remove people out of the homes, which is good for the cohesiveness of a community, which had done good prior to big business wanting to invade in this property. Again, I thank you all for this opportunity to speak, and I will be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. So Councilwoman Salier, you want to take it from here?
I'll take it from here. If I can find my microphone. Thank you very much. I first want to say, obviously, this is a matter of great interest to many people in this room, and I truly appreciate you coming down, taking the time today to talk to us about this. And for those of you that have met with me previously, I really appreciate that as well. It's important to have this kind of input. Placentan Pan is clearly a neighborhood in resurgence, and has been. I, I consider it to be one of the poster child revitalization neighborhoods of Oklahoma City. You know, starting with the Plaza District, the ripples just began to run out, and Placentan Pan with its emphasis as an SNI neighborhood, with the reinvestment that private citizens have made in the neighborhood. It's one of the greatest stories that we have to tell. And in this sense, I really think it deserves these enhanced amenities that we're talking about today. I have a lot of things to, to say, I'll try to meander through some notes, but I, I do want to correct a couple of things, or add something to some of those. Mr. Washington suggested that some of these early meetings were nefarious in nature. They weren't at all. They were an attempt by ONQ before they even moved forward to consider this as a location, to talk to the closest, most affected neighbors and see how they felt. So the earliest meetings were just with the surrounding property owners to gauge their interest and willingness to sell their property, not have their property taken, but sell their property. So those occurred early on, and they were met with positive feedback from those closest affected. You know, often when we have this kind of a conflict, it's, we have to bring the developer to the table to make concessions and to make suggestions of how this project could be improved for the neighborhood. And in this particular case, I would say it was almost upside down. ONQ was working, has been working in conversation from the beginning to talk about enhanced landscaping, working on traffic, figuring out what to do with those two residential properties. And I think it's important to say, even though, you know, we say they're being located, they're being located with Positively Paseo as a partnership, and to relocate them into the Placentan neighborhood where they will be effective. I learned yesterday that there is, there are three new homes proposed to be built right at 15th and Placent, one of which is the private residence of the developer that's doing the development, and he is supportive of this project as an additional amenity to the neighborhood. And, you know, I look at that corridor, I probably drive that corridor along Placent four times a day minimum. And as this came to me, there were several sites that, that were looked at, some of which were not feasible at all. In my mind, this particular site, with the interesting topographical change, makes it kind of an ideal site, because the property tucks in, and you've got this long, tall retaining wall and the trees, so that as you're coming north on Placent, it really is sort of set back into that curve. They've reduced the size, the number of pumps, their normal stations are 12 pumps, they've reduced that to eight, so that 16 pumping stations sounds like a lot, but it's actually one on each side of eight pumps. And that was a concession made to make it a little bit more urban. With Mr. Griffith here, I would say, would I wish that the design would be more urban rather than similar? I probably would, but, you know, a company that's, has a brand and a chain, has trouble doing one-offs. And so I, I, I wish we could, but we didn't. We've, there have been concessions made in terms of the hours of the drive-through, limited to six to 11. I don't know if there's any movement in that. I don't know if a few hours on either, or an hour on either side would make a difference to the neighbors, but that's certainly a discussion. I understand that a very significant portion of the business comes through the drive-through. So I think having it there is significant. They've eliminated pole signs, they've eliminated lighted signs that would go back into the neighborhood. You know, I think this just provides an opportunity to continue to see the upgrading of the neighborhood with sunbeam, Catholic charities, the new homeland. The business that the renovated homeland is doing is absolutely amazing, and the neighbors are so grateful to have that enhanced service. And I just think, why would they not also want to have the benefit of an upgraded convenience store and an upgraded service station that will provide lighting, security? I understand that the employees have all been trained so that the gas station is a safe place, so that in the case of a situation of domestic violence, or, you know, a child facing danger, they can go to, and ONQ, to this ONQ. And they will call and make sure that the person receives safe services. The enhanced landscaping, the traffic improvements, I, I just believe that this will be long-term an enhancement for the neighborhood. And David, it wasn't eight years ago that the ONQ went on Northwest Expressway, it was more than nine, because Councilman Mars was in James Griner's seat. And I sat through those discussions, where the neighbors were so upset. And I have heard neighbors say today, they're really pleased that that facility is there, and that it has enhanced their neighborhood, and that they were wrong.
I actually live in that neighborhood now, and I've heard numerous of my neighbors say that they were wrong in protesting it, so.
So as, you know, as a councilperson, as we try to balance these interests of everybody, being black or white doesn't work. Compromising is the solution here, and I think, I'd like to be sure that we add a good neighbor clause to this as well, and a, let's, you know, hope we can all be good neighbors, but I think at this point, I would move approval of this item.
Well, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Because I, maybe this is for Aub-, whoa, sorry. Wow. This is passive-aggressive on them. So when I'm reading page 14 and 15 of the staff report, and conformance with the comprehensive plan, am I reading this right, that the recommendation, I mean, there is language that, that raises several concerns about conformance with the comprehensive plan, and then it seems like the recommendation is denial or approval without the drive-through?
Right. That was the recommendation. Oftentimes, if we find incompatibility between two different land uses, and the comprehensive plan calls out what those points of incompatibility are, like traffic impacts, noise, operational impacts, it's up to the applicant and the planning commission to negotiate what mitigation might be able to offset those impacts. So oftentimes, the staff report will offer some solutions that could be points of that negotiation, and if planning commission finds that that mitigation is satisfactory to meet the terms of the comprehensive plan, then they could choose that option to approve it with those technical evaluations added, which is what happened through the course of the discussion.
So with, with the drive-through, you would recommend approval, without the drive-through, staff would recommend denial?
That, that was how the initial recommendation from staff was posed, yes.
Okay. To me, that's the compromise. I mean, I agree with you, that compromise should be the goal, and to me, that's, that's the compromise, is, is, you know, it's one thing to, to build something very suburban in a very urban location, it's another thing to start taking R1 lots that, that the city's invested in and has been part of our strategy, move them or demolish them, whatever, I don't know what kind of precedent we're setting, so that we can have high-intensity drive-throughs. To me, the compromise is, you know, allowed to happen without, without the drive-through. That's what, that's what our staff is telling us that they recommend.
Ed, I hear that, but when it went to planning commission, they took out that TE? It was approved by the planning commission? Would, would the drive-through use must be eliminated, removed?
We had two people that voted against it, and one person that was abstinent, so it certainly wasn't unanimous.
Right. It was not a unanimous vote, but it was approved, and the hours have been reduced. And as I pointed out earlier, one of the closest commercial businesses to this gas station is a Brahms, and it has a drive-through that's been there for years, and doesn't seem to be providing any negative impact on the neighborhood, which is right there as well.
Well, would, would you be opposed to, what I hear the neighborhood saying is, that's the one thing they're asking for. Could we, could we vote on that? And if, if there's no interest on the council, there's no interest on the council. But just vote on that compromise to do the-
How do we?
It's not a compromise. The applicant, the property owner has a say in these, these matters, and they're not, they're not willing to do that. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time talking about it. It's incorrect that if the drive-through was eliminated, that those two houses would no longer be needed. The site doesn't change. We still need that space to meet parking requirements, et cetera. So it doesn't change the ability to have or not have a drive-through. In terms of the comprehensive plan, though, I, I do want to point to page 14. Under the staff recommendation, it says, "Determination of conformance with policies contained in the comprehensive plan is in the purview of the planning commission." And again, the planning commission voted six to two to approve it with the drive-through, with a limitation of hours.
Would you, I mean, maybe this is a question for ONQ. I mean, do you, I mean, obviously, ONQ is expanding, right? I mean, they continue to build more and more, acquire more and more. Is this, is more of this coming? I mean, is this, like, now downtown or urban locations, I mean, is this the precedent now that we, we come in with, it's, you're, you're saying that even without the drive-through, we have to have a, a lot big enough that we're acquiring R1 lots, and getting rid of them and incorporating it into something this large? I mean, is more of this coming, or is this a one-off?
So all I can speak to is the, the application before you, that there's no precedential effect. I mean, every zoning case stands on its own merits. I believe your city attorney will, will agree with that. So there's no precedential effect here. And in terms of intrusion into the neighborhood, if you look north of us, the C4 zoning that exists north of us actually goes further west into the neighborhood. So, you know, there are examples of, of this type of commercial development within neighborhoods and/or abiding neighborhoods all over the city, especially within the core.
What happens, and I know this is really theoretical, and this might sound, but, so the, the uses are restricted to a gas station, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what happens in the decades to come if the need for gas stations, if the demand plummets? If electric vehicles make inroads into the market, and the need for these mega gas stations diminishes?
So like, if, if the gas station went away and closed up?
Right.
Somebody would have to come and rezone it. And so somebody would have to file a zoning case that would require notice and opportunity to be heard and re-engagement with the neighborhood? Because they're all accessory to the operation of the gas station. So if the gas station use is no longer, none of those uses could operate independently.
But I think for me, that is a consideration, because I think the demand is going to decrease in the years and decades to come. The, the need for these mega gas stations is going to diminish. Electric vehicles are going to make inroads, and this will be like huge parking garages. The, the demand, the younger generations are not buying as many vehicles, hopefully public transit improves, and electric vehicles will make inroads, and the demand for this amount of intensity will, will diminish.
Well, Ed, we sure need more places to fuel electric cars at the moment. I've got a friend that has to drive out to the outlet mall to charge a car.
I, I've done that a few times myself, but the difference is that we can, you can charge them at your home. And so these, these large commercial, there, there will be a movement away from that towards refueling at the home.
And ONQ is looking at putting charging stations within this site?
Well, that, that's smart, long-term.
So we have a motion in a second.
Oh, I have a question. And it's, I'm in favor of the proposed plan as it's presented to us, but Kenny, my question to you is, does the city council have the ability to restrict or determine what's sold through drive-through facilities versus a store's normal operations?
What is actually sold, like a Coke or a-
Right.
No, I wouldn't do that. I would recommend not doing that.
No, no, it's just a question. Since it was raised as to that particular issue, we don't have any ability to control or restrict what's sold through a drive-through facility versus the normal operations.
Yeah. I would say it doesn't really have any relationship to the land use. It's, the, the land use is the car driving through there and the screening on to the west of it, and-
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Mcatee?
Quick comment. There, there is some benefit from being on the council for a number of years. I've been on the council since 2001. When I joined the council, there was something in vogue at that time called weed and seed. Weed and seed was put on by the Department of Justice. You took a neighborhood that was distressed, and your goal was to weed out the bad things and to plant the good things. It's interesting to note that the second weed and seed in Oklahoma City was Placentan Pan. Here we are talking about bringing a good, additional, economic, and service-oriented company into the area, which 20 years ago, we were trying to get things out. We want this to be sustainable, and I think the addition of the drive-through will give the ONQ folks an added source of, of revenue in providing service to the marketplace, which will help the ONQ stay sustainable in the years ahead and continue the moving of Placentan 1010 forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion? Okay, well, we do have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes eight to one. If you're hoping for a palate cleanser, you're not going to get it, because we now have item 96. This is at 1111 Northeast 63rd, from RE, I'm sorry, from Har. 1 to SPUD 1093. This was deferred from last meeting. Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, get ready. Buckle your seatbelts. And we have this one to permit office and medical marijuana dispensary, and I know we have the applicant, as well as some protest and some comments and citizens to be heard.
Yeah, we have four citizens, but perhaps if the applicant's here, we could start with that.
Okay.
Okay, sure, please. State your name and address.
I'm Chad Moody, and I am the applicant for the SPOD at Northeast 11, or 1111 Northeast 63rd Street. And when the initial notice of this went out- And when the initial notice of this went out, now, I'm going to the best of my understanding, Mr. Box had represented me, and so if I misspeak, please correct me. But when the initial notice for this went out, the Persimmon Hills neighborhood didn't seem to have any objection. And then we had the approval that I believe followed the city planning commission approval, or had the meeting here in January 31, I think it was, maybe 16. In any event, an approval that, or a letter that went out subsequent to that initial approval specified the medical marijuana intention, and then I received a letter from Mr. Skinner, the head of the Persimmon Hills City Council, inviting me to a meeting at Cowboy Hall of Fame that I attended, where I never have felt so much like Frankenstein meeting the peasants with the pitchforks. I was surprised at the turnout and the upset of that neighborhood. I have kind of put two and two together and learned that that is a very parochial neighborhood. They are absolutely hostile to any commercial development. The only commercial development that I'm aware of that has occurred in that whole mile section is Cole's Garden, and one of the persons at that meeting that I attended grousted as though they had been tricked into Cole's Garden. The really regrettable thing here is that this is the classic NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard kind of scenario. Oklahomans voted at nearly 58% to approve of medical marijuana as a way to treat maladies the same as we use other medicines. There is a stereotype that has been attached to marijuana, thanks to 70 years of failed propaganda by the government with regard to the drug war and marijuana being somehow inimical. What we are rapidly finding out is that it is very beneficial for a lot of uses, and a lot of our opioid addiction is going to be abated by it, a lot of benefit is going to be had by it. But I understand their concern, given the stereotypes, but the concerns are not warranted, particularly when you consider my inability to pick good tenants. One of the concerns expressed at that meeting was that it would raise crime. Well, the last tenant that I had in that house was extracted by the SWAT team, and he was performing a, an internet stolen property sales fencing operation out of there. And so they've already had significant crime there, thanks to my poor choice of a tenant. I was not disregardful of that neighborhood whenever I started this process. Eric Moser is the only neighbor that realistically stands to be affected. You can see that just to the east of the proposed spud, there's a section labeled R4, which is a vacant lot, and then a residence immediately to the east of that. That is Eric Moser's residence. Given that he is the only one that would conceivably have any real impact, I called Eric before I started this whole process and said, "Are you going to have any objection to this?" And he said, "Well, I wouldn't want a strip mall or anything like that there, but so long as it stays in the neighborhood or in the appearance of a neighborhood," he wouldn't have any objection. And so I really didn't anticipate any objection whatsoever, because the driveway that serves the proposed spud, as well as the four houses behind it that I own, is a dead-end driveway. It does not connect to the rest of the Persimmon Hill neighborhood. In fact, it's only by virtue of just happening to be in that same mile section that I'm lumped in with the Persimmon Hill neighborhood. There is absolutely no traffic that goes up my driveway and into the Persimmon Hill neighborhood, so any objections regarding traffic are spurious. I think that another one of the concerns was that I might have a sign out front. If it is necessary to abandon the sign, my primary objective here is to be able to move my law office there. After having succeeded in lobbying successfully for marijuana law reform, I am now having to branch out and find something else to do, and I'm hoping to be able to put a law office there. It's a house built in 1907, has pretty dork columns out front, and it would make a very nice law office. The dispensary idea was sort of incidental to, and in view of that, and in view of the fact that this received no hostility or complaint whenever it initially went out, it's just an application for, or on the initial mailing by the city, it was designated only as general office use and not specifically marijuana. I would ask that, in the event that this spud fails, that I be allowed to orally amend my application to make it only for a law office, to see if that use might be found compatible. Also, we are dealing with a little bit of new law in this context. 788 foresaw, that is the bill that made medical marijuana legal, foresaw this possibility coming about, and in Section 6F of 788, it states, "No city or local municipality may unduly change or restrict zoning laws to prevent the opening of a retail marijuana establishment." And so this is probably the first case of its kind to come before this body, and I would ask you to not give ear to your fears. I have been to a number of these dispensaries around. Most of the people going in and out of these dispensaries are my age and older. It is not a bunch of hoodlum hippies that we're dealing with. And so in view of all that, I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
What I'd like to do is, let's hear from the other...
I want to just clarify a question. So you own all of those homes to the north of the site?
Yes, all four of them.
Do you live there?
No, longer. I did it one time.
Yeah, okay.
How long ago?
2010, I think I moved out. My father had a stroke, and I had to move out by him, by Frontier City.
So Chad, the driveway there is, there's a driveway off of 63rd Street?
Yes.
That goes up to those houses?
Correct.
No one uses that driveway other than you?
Well, no, my tenants and me. But just us. It doesn't go anywhere other than to those five houses.
There are five houses and five tenants currently?
Well, currently, four tenants. The property we're speaking about is currently vacant.
And if you look, continue to look further back, that's where we have another, another property owner that spoke during our last conversation. And the way that this driveway, it does stop, but I was actually in the neighborhood driving around myself, and once you go up there, there is a possibility that once that driveway stops and you don't know where you are going, you will go through the grass and you will go through that neighbor's driveway to get to the main street to come back out to 63rd. So that would be a conflict as far as some people not understanding that it does stop if you're not paying attention and you're unfamiliar with that area.
My tenants had some concern about there being traffic up there, and it's already part of my plan to put a gate basically where the northern green line is to prohibit any egress or in that direction towards the north.
Well, I know there's a small one now, but to me, that wouldn't prohibit people going around there.
No, I'm talking about, that's not really even a gate, that's a section of a fence that I think you're referencing. If you come on back down to...
Either way, it's a barrier to prevent people from going through there.
Right, I'm talking about the barrier that I intend to put would be basically where the northern green line is on the map, if you're seeing what I'm seeing.
And are the rest of the tenants residential tenants?
If there's no further questions for Mr. Moody, we can bring up the citizens that have signed up to speak. Okay, thank you. Mike Skinner? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Sure. Mike Skinner, 6532 North Lottie, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73111. I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association. I can, I can speak to those comments and then hear. I would characterize Persimmon Hill Neighborhood Association as very protective of the neighborhood. Parochial, I'm an engineer by degree, so I'll use protective. But inclusive, whereas households, I can give you two examples. The applicant, those renters, we reach out to them, they're on our mailing list, they receive, we include them as part of the neighborhood. Off this discussion, but at, in our neighborhood, at the northwest corner is a Buddhist temple, Laotian, super folks. We include them respectfully. I appreciate their Facebook, so as a Southern Baptist, I get to learn about Buddhism. But we include them, their households, their folks invested in the neighborhood. So we are very protective of the north side of Northeast 63rd and very concerned when what we see as commercialization. And it gets to the Cole's Garden question. That came to the neighborhood, and it was opposed by the neighborhood. It was passed as a museum. It then converted at some point to an event center. It is a totally different situation in the neighborhood's mind. My property on North Lottie shares a wall with Cole's Garden, 10-foot, very ornate steel fence, evergreen trees, very high. We cannot see into Cole's Garden. We are directly there, as the overalls would be, at the top end of that R4 corner up there. Totally different situation here to the neighborhood. That our, the commercialization creep question, north side, is a concern. I appreciate Councilman Mcatee at the last council discussion, because I just flat-forged to bring it up. The owner of that R4 property, he tells us his future intent at some point is to put senior apartments into that property. So admittedly, to the council, to the planning commission, that probably is viewed as not residential or commercial. To us, those are homes, households, invested in the community, in the neighborhood. We would reach out to them exactly as we have with renters, with the Buddhist temple. But should this be approved as is presented to the council? From speaking to that applicant, that would not occur. That would probably be another spud presented to the city. There's another vacant house by Cole's Garden. Folks working very hard to get it sold as a residence, but we begin to see the creep toward Cole's Garden. When I spoke to Jennifer Dottie, not Jennifer Wood, she's so gracious, I called her Jenny Wood three times in our discussions, I said, "Here is a spud. Please do what's best for Cole's Garden." As a neighborhood, as a president, I would recommend you would protest it. They did. Natalie Shirley, super-nice person. I appreciate Jamie Shearman, her chief of staff for the National Cowboy Hall, the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum. I'm invested in the community. I grew up on Lottie, so I apologize. I watched them build the Cowboy Hall. It'll always be the Cowboy Hall to me. I said, "Miss Shirley, you have to do what's best for the national museum. You simply have to do that. You're a CEO, you've got board members. Please, would you consider it? We would strongly encourage you to send a letter to Councilwoman Nice, Woman Nice, to oppose it, and they have." We talked to Dr. Cecilia Romison-Wood, superintendent of Millwood, to the growth in the area that we are fully supportive for, again, protective but inclusive. We've watched Millwood grow from when I went to a ninth grade to a high school to a pre-K to support a church on Sundays, and now Langston is there. You can go from pre-K to graduate from Langston University and stay at that same campus. Would you please consider it? Again, do what's best for Millwood. We would recommend you voice against it. They did, and wrote a letter. Full support of the board and with the Millwood Board and with Dr. Wood. So we don't see a commercialization on the north side now. This would be a major effort. Second point, medical marijuana. Realize it's a state law. We used Mr. Box's approach, number one, to see if we were being reasonable in approaching the council, and basically toured Oklahoma City. I got to see parts of Oklahoma City. I had, in my mind, we're still from the '60s, sort of Councilwoman Sawyer's comment. Growth is fantastic in this city, but we Googled medical marijuana dispensaries, we drove around Oklahoma City, we couldn't find no other dispensary that was in this type of setting. All others were in a commercial building, arty commercial, like you see at Northeast 63rd and Kelly. Vacant today, available. Commercial property south of 63rd, available. We see other options. Security. We appreciate Sergeant Huff, he comes to many of our Neighborhood Association meetings. Spring Lake Division, to us, is the best of the best in any nation, but especially in the nation, but especially Oklahoma City. Should this spud be approved? That is a tough situation. Late at night, coming up that drive, the National Guard to the left, vacant lot to the right, people downrange, if you will, into the neighborhood. That is tough from a security perspective, and the one nuance to medical marijuana is it's a cash business. It has to be a cash business, because marijuana possession is still a federal crime. Banks cannot support transactions, has to be cash. And three-year study, again, Denver, Colorado, by Ohio State University, found an increase in property crime around it. Finally, the community. It started in, my goodness, this house built in 1907, our urban legend, if you will, or our info, it was a Sears house. The Sears Historical Registry tells me they didn't start building them until 1908, but essentially, it's as old as the state. Home's built in 1945. Our home built in 1957. Mr. Moser will come and speak to you, and then Mr. Gilly. Mr. Moser, I think it was 63rd was a dirt path at that time. So we are invested in this neighborhood. I'm a second generation coming through. I apologize. Hank Young is coming back to the neighborhood. For those of you that knew, the Boltons, unit parts just down and on 63rd. I asked him for just an objective viewpoint, 30-some-odd years in the federal lawyer, administrative judge today. Hank, here it is, you're coming back. He married Ann Bolton, so Ann Bolton, yeah.
Well, maybe, just so we have time for everybody else.
Sure, yes, sir. No, no.
I think we fully understand.
I think you've got the gist of it, sir, and I apologize.
All right, no worries. Thank you. Calvin Moser?
I'm Calvin Moser. My property is 1127 Northeast 63rd. That's the property that's just to the east of this property with the circle driveway. My father purchased that property back in the '60s. My dad and I rebuilt it along with others. The property is estimated by the city razor to be somewhere around a half a million dollars. I'm very, very, very concerned about what is being planned to put in as a neighbor. Far different than what we ever anticipated having in our neighborhood. The property just to the east of my property is my son's property, who he referenced to was okay with that, or maybe he said, maybe he had a little doubt. That's my son, he has a big doubt on that. So I don't know of anyone in our area, when we found out what was really going to be put in there, why we didn't object before, we didn't have any idea that's what was going to be put in there. We were told it was going to be a small office space, maybe eight, nine, 10 people would come there a day, you know, just a small, and he was going to use Mr. Humphrey's house as his office, which is fine. Down the corner, you have a corner down here at Kelly Avenue, some of you may remember the White House. It was an attorney's office at one time, also a restaurant at one time. I'm not sure what's in there now. That served as a law office. Had no problem with that. But for this residence and this area to become an area where you're going to have traffic as a commercial area for products, I'm not opposed to cannabis. I know of people, I worked at HUD, I know of people that need that oil to help them in a health situation. That's not the question. That is not the question at all. The question is, what are we going to do with the traffic? We have the red line, the green line on one of the pictures, that's 63rd Street. There is no reason why he cannot connect to that 63rd Street and thereby making a U shape around and going down the little street to the east there, which you need to drive that street to know what it is. It's one lane. I mean, yeah, if you move over and drive in a culvert, two people can pass. So I'm very opposed, and I have a lot of other things I could say in here, but I've shortened this because we've been too long now anyway. But thank you for your attention, and I do hope that you choose in our favor of opposing the process.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Afton Gill? If you'd state your name and address.
Thank you very much. I'd like to apologize, I'm not a really good public speaker, and, but I know I'm not as entertaining as some that you've had today, Mr. Washington, for example, but my name is Afton Gillie. I own the property at 6512 North Missouri. My father was an architect, designed that house, and I've inherited that house. I grew up next to the Allens that you heard from a couple of weeks ago, and went to school with Skinner, Mr. Skinner at Millwood School. I was there when they opened up Cowboy Hall of Fame, and the wagon train came in, and they camped out down at the bottom of my street. they camped out down at the bottom of my street. I used to walk down 63rd Street, down to Little Jims, and get candy bars for a nickel and gum for a penny. So, I've been in that neighborhood a long time, and I'd walk by this house. If you can look at the screen up here, you see this beautiful house. It's a 1907 Sears Roebuck and Company catalog ordered house. It's a historic home. It's a beautiful home. It needs to remain a home. We need to protect historic property like this and keep it, and I think the purpose of this home is to be a home and not to be a commercial dispensary for medical marijuana. Like Mr. Skinner said, there's lots of other sites. If Mr. Moody does not want to be in the rental business, which I think he must not be, because I've spoken to every one of his tenants, including the one that was in the house before, who actually loved the house a lot, and said it was absolutely beautiful, not one of them wants this to be there. And most of them have told me they will move out of his rental property if it goes through and it causes the problems that they anticipate, especially this traffic. Like was just mentioned, it's a one-lane road going up there, but the traffic isn't even the biggest part of it. This is a home that needs to be protected. As Mr. Moody testified, or spoke to you, he said, and he came to our neighborhood association and explained that he was a proponent of lowering the drug penalty for drug possession, and that has influenced his business in a negative way. It has caused him to lose thousands of dollars. I see this as another issue that Mr. Moody has not been able to see the future of him putting in a medical marijuana dispensary is going to hurt his rental business. You know, if he really wants to have that, then I think he needs to sell his rental properties and move it to another site. He's, I know he's upset he has to close his downtown business and move to another place to save money, but, and again, if he wants to move this and make this a law office, I believe he needs to file a new application with the city to allow that to be approved. And I don't think that, I personally don't think it should even be made a law office. I feel that it should be preserved as a historic home and kept that way. I just think that Mr. Moody is self-destructive. He's had some self-destructive thoughts and the way he's presented to us. It was his own, it was his own, part of his own doing, is promoting the marijuana lessening of the charges against drug possession, and it's hurt his business. And doing this will also hurt his business. He also mentioned that the no city or state should change zoning laws to prohibit marijuana. Well, we're not asking you to prohibit, to change a zoning law, not at all. That's kind of a misdirection by Mr. Moody. We're asking you to enforce the zoning laws that are now, and not give a, not change the zoning law to permit the distribution of medical marijuana in this location. Our neighborhood is a quiet neighborhood. It's, you know, we love each other, we help each other, but we do not want to see the commercialization of this coming into our neighborhood. And this house is set way back into the neighborhood, so it's not like it's right on the edge of the street where, you know, your cars could just pull in off the street. It's going back up the hill. And I just think it's very objectionable to the community, and I don't think that this city council should approve this. And we're asking you today to deny the request for a zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Strickland Allen? Oh, I'm sorry. Did anyone have any questions for him? No. Okay, Cheryl?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council people. I appreciate your opportunity to give to us. I'm speaking really for grandchildren and great-grandchildren right now. You've already heard that we are really not in favor of changing the zoning to allow commercialization or retailing in our residential area. We want to make sure that you also are thinking about those who cannot speak for themselves, which are the grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I'm a grandmother of 13, great-grandmother of five. We like to have our children come and visit us. We also like to have them be able to play outside. That's one of the reasons that we own the property that we own. We have a place for them to go and be children in a wooded area so that they are able to look at wildlife, they're able to look at birds, all kinds of interesting things for people to see. They don't have to pay a word, pay a penny to get there. We come and we bring with us picnics. We have a good time. When we had a birthday of one of our grandsons, we had a look, we had, all the neighbors were involved. They went around with a list of things they wanted to get, a scavenger hunt, and all of our neighbors participated. This was after dark. We were absolutely not worried about them, because in our neighborhood, we have security. It was really important to me to hear an FBI agent's wife say, "You know, if you have good neighbors, you don't need a security system. You don't need to have a police force, which has 25 more people on it than what you actually need. We don't have to worry about that, because our neighbors keep an eye on us." We want to make sure that our grandchildren and great-grandchildren can play outside without us having to go outside and keep an eye on them, because if you commercialize any part of a residential area, that means you're going to have strangers driving down your streets. We don't want that, because we want safety. We want security, and we want privacy. We want to be able to be, able to open our windows and not worry about somebody peering in at us because they're driving by to see what's going on in our neighborhood. We ask that you would please defeat this request for a spud. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizens. Councilwoman Nice?
All right, thank you, Mayor. With that, and again, if you look at the area and you see just kind of how it sits up, unfortunately, when we're looking at this piece of property, we have, it's hard for us to find balance, because obviously, the property owner owns all of that, and it's hard to, for the community, as far as the residents around it, to be able to legally protest in a manner for them to be effective in that. And as you heard, they are against the commercialization in retail of their neighborhood, and I would have to agree with them on that. So, I am asking that we deny based on that decision.
Second.
So, we've got a motion and a second to deny. So, just to clarify, if you vote for the motion, you're denying the application. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, cast your votes. Again, a vote yes is to deny the application. Okay, the motion carries eight to one. The motion, the application is denied. All right, moving on to 9A7. This is at 6620 North Sooner Road, moving from AA to SPUD 1096. Also, Councilwoman Nice?
And I'm not sure if the applicant is here. Do we have any protests or any citizens?
All right. Oh, applicant, oh, there she is. Did you want to speak on this? No? That's fine. We can go ahead. I ask, we move approval for this one.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A8 at 1117 Northwest 15th, moving from R3 to SPUD 1097. Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually some of the infill that we were talking about on Northwest 15th and Classen a little bit earlier. Has anybody signed up to speak? Nope, already? There were no protests, and it was approved by the planning commission. I would move to approve.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A9, 1515 North Portland, moving from C3 and O1 to SPUD 1099. Councilwoman McAtee?
Your Honor, is anyone here to speak to this?
One.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
Seeing that there's nobody signed up, if you don't mind, I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9B1 and 2, these are related. 2 is an ordinance that was on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2101 Westbury Drive, moving from PUD 1629 to PUD 1701. And then, item 9B1 is an amendment to the master design statement related to this application. Councilman McAtee?
Now, has anybody signed up? If you'd come forward. Since there's a lot behind this particular application, would you give the council an overview of how we got to where we are today?
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Walters, who is here with me. As Councilman McAtee said, this is a project and a piece of dirt that has been going on for quite some time. I think this is the third or fourth zoning application that I've filed on this exact same property. This is the old Westbury Golf Course. The first time we came for the council, many of you were not on here, some of you were, and you saw a significant amount of protests and opposition. And through the hard work of Mr. Walters and his development team, you know, we now come before you with nobody here. So, what we have proposed all along are senior living, this part of the city. This is a project and a market that is underserved. And frankly, when, I think the neighbors got past the fact that the golf course was not coming back, I think they realized that perhaps this was a better opportunity. You're not going to see the amount of traffic that you might otherwise see in a single-family residential development, and has the opportunity to take advantage of some of the natural features, like the ponds and the creeks, et cetera. But with that, some of the problems that are created by having a development of a former golf course come with access and how you move cars and things of that nature. So, when we originally got it approved, it was contemplated that perhaps we could access. Cindy, if you could go back to the plat, the first image you had up there, if you don't mind. We're going to have to have a second point of ingress and egress at some point. And so, it was hoped that perhaps we could go south. If you look at what is labeled as Southwest 21st, what you can't tell in that image is Southwest 21st Street, perhaps strategically, doesn't actually touch the property line. And so, when we approached the developer to the south to try to connect for a second point of access, they declined to allow it unless we were willing to fund the entirety of their infrastructure for their development. And although that was quite a generous offer, my client had to decline. And so, we had to see about how we're going to get a second point of access. So, what we're going to do is we're going to access the site from Sarah, which is to the west. That's going to require we cross the creek twice. So, that, I mean, that's a significant expense, as you might imagine. We're dealing with the core, we're having to build bridges. So, what we've done is we've made sure that we are in compliance with all Fire Marshal regulations as it relates to access, and we are. And so, all this PUD is doing is, well, it's doing three things. Most importantly, it's keeping all of the negotiated compromises that were in place in the original PUD intact. We're simply asking for 66 COs prior to having to build the second point of access. And in addition, will you see Hayden Drive on your screen? That first building is the existing cart barn, when it was a golf course that was used for the cart barn. We have some very specific provisions that were drafted into the PUD in the first instance that prevented certain types of residential units of being on top of another residential unit, so that, you know, the idea being, we don't want this to become a traditional apartment building. The concept that Mr. Walters has was appealing, but perhaps a traditional apartment building wouldn't be. So, there's some very specific language in there that we're having to modify, but only for that single building, and that's because there is a hallway and some loft space that would technically be above another living space that would be leased by somebody else. And so, out of an abundance of caution and to be completely transparent, we had a neighborhood meeting to describe that. And so, the lifting of that prohibition of one over the other is limited to that single existing building, which, as you can tell, is the furthest away from the existing Westbury neighborhood. So, before we filed this and went to planning commission, we did have a neighborhood meeting where we explained all of this. Again, it's just the two things, that provision and then to the Sarah. Nobody was at the planning commission hearing, just like no one is here today. So, staff did recommend approval with a handful of TEs that were negotiated slightly at the planning commission phase, and the documents have been amended accordingly.
Just a couple of questions, if you'd indulge me just a second, counsel. The access point to Sarah Road was of concern, because Sarah Road is a major, significant bottleneck, but we are widening Sarah Road with a joint project with the Turnpike Authority to a four-lane, and so that should relieve that particular objection, should it not?
I believe so.
Okay. And then, it was also a question, the land in the past has flooded in some of the violent rainstorms that we've had. It was a question about flooding. Before a house can be built, there have to be an occupancy, or there not, a building permit filed for, and the elevations and all of the flood control will be looked at in detail at that time?
That's right. Yeah, before any building permits can issue, you know, detailed elevations and studies, et cetera, must be submitted to Public Works Utilities. And I'm told, most of that has already been submitted and has been approved by city staff.
So, there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes talking and studies on this. There are no protesters today, so unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, and I'm going to take that motion as replying to 9B1, the amendment to the master design statement, and then we'll handle the ordinance on final hearing after that.
Okay.
So, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then, Councilwoman, for a second motion?
For 9B2?
Yes, correct.
I move for approval of 9B2.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, we're at 9C1 and 2. 9C2 is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2222 Northeast 27th Street, from R1 to SPUD 1101. And then, also, there's item 9C1, is an amendment to the master design statement that was related to this as well. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I know the applicant is here, and this is going to be something exciting for the community with organic produce, herbs, flowers, and eggs to be produced, and Langston University is also going to be helping with this effort, and we're going to be using students from Douglas and Northeast in providing after-school work during the summer for them. So, that's definitely needed in the community, and as you can see, this is what we're looking at. So, I'm going to move that we approve the C1.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And I move now for approval of C2.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now, we are on item 9D. This is an ordinance on final hearing. This was recommended for denial. This is at 9816 Southwest 89th Street, moving from AA to SPUD 1064. Looks like there's a request to potentially go back to planning, but I'll leave that to you, Councilman McAtee.
I'm sorry, I thought we, I thought we were sending this back to planning.
That's, requires a motion, correct?
Require a motion? I moved it to get it sent back to planning. I'm sorry.
No worries.
But it was a done deal.
Motion and a second to send it back to planning. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E, this is ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, closing and vacate and an easement at 615 North Classen. Councilwoman Sawyer?
Well, 615 North Classen's been in the news a lot lately, and this is not specifically related to the wavy drive-through, but I'm just going to make a comment anyway and hope that somebody out here will come forward. I see Lynn in the audience. I just, I really hope that somebody will come forward and help us with the drive-through. The purpose of this specific ordinance is to close, vacate, and easement in order to allow for the building addition for the new administration building for the public schools.
Correct. Alec Bass, Wallace Engineering, representing the applicant. This particular lot is currently developed as a bank building with all that is, a sidewalk paving and parking to the north of the existing building. Oklahoma City Public Schools is proposing to do a building addition to the north of that. We've coordinated with all utilities. We're currently relocating the Santa Fe sewer line that was in there, and if no objections, I'll be here for any questions.
Move approval of the closure.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Try to save that drive-through for us.
9- 9F. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval. It's a special permit to operate a commercial blood center in the C3 Commercial District at 4275 Northwest 63rd. We have had someone sign up to speak, Jeff Harris.
I'm the applicant.
Oh, you're the applicant. Okay. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, it's recommended for approval, so I'll move for approval.
Okay. Are you okay if we just vote? Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. 9G. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on March 12th, final adoption potentially on March 26th, relates to motor vehicles and traffic, specifically a definition of motorized scooter. So this is in our practice of ordinance amendments. This is our first of three meetings, so there is a presentation to that.
Yes, Steve Kreis with Municipal Counsel's Office is here to give us a quick presentation.
Good morning. This will simply add a definition for the vehicle known as a motorized scooter, which currently does not exist in city ordinance. There is a comparable state law definition. We've merely incorporated that same language into city ordinance. This will allow us to regulate these vehicles under our city ordinances, and there's also what we call a motor scooter, so this will help clarify the differences between those two vehicles.
Okay. Any questions? Pretty basic. We would need a motion to introduce the ordinance for consideration.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. So again, that will have a public hearing set on March 12th. Moving on to 9H1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures listed here, except for the ones previously stricken. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion regarding these addresses?
Mayor, I'd like to mention something with regard to this. Today is actually Charles Locke's last council meeting.
Oh, wow.
Before he retires on March the 7th. And I believe, Charles, your tenure with the city is almost 42 years, and we are sure grateful for that and all of the support that you've provided to this council for years and years. But we make hard decisions on these properties every single day, and we have to ask a lot of questions from time to time, and you've been wonderful in assisting us. Can we give you a round of applause?
Thank you, Charles. Anyone who wishes to speak on these items? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for H2, which is a resolution declaring them a dilapidated.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9I1. This is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures listed here, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the resolution at 92, declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J1. This is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings listed here, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9J2, a resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9K. This is a resolution declaring the need to amend the 2009 International Fire Code, et cetera, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yeah, Chief Kelly is going to be, give us a quick presentation on this item.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. This will be a real brief overview of a resolution to amend the 2009 International Fire Code. We're looking at amending Chapter 5, Section 506.1 issuance of the key boxes. If you'll look at this, the... Real quick, this is the current language that we have, and it basically says where access to or within a structure or area is restricted because of secured openings or where immediate access is necessary for life-saving or firefighting purposes. The fire code official, which that's our fire marshal, is authorized to require a key box to be installed at approved locations. I wanted to have a picture here so you could see actually what we're talking about. The box is there that we refer to as a NOX box, our key box. You see those on commercial structures or outside a gated area, and that's so we can get in, as it says there, for life-saving or firefighting operations. The definition, so you understand, that real quick is a secure box or a device with a lock operable only by fire department master key and containing building entry keys or other keys that may be required for emergency access. So we put keys in these commercial structures where we can actually get them out and get into the structures and take care of any issues that we're dealing with that's life-saving or firefighting operations. What we're proposing in the new language is just an addition to that 506.1, and that's where we can, the fire code official may issue a limited number of box keys to emergency services, other first response departments, or other agencies operating within the city of Oklahoma City. So it's for that, so they can gain access strictly for life-saving or purposes in that or firefighting. So we wanted to have that new language in there where we could issue those keys. If you'll look at the benefits to that, an example could be emergency response, where the fire department is not responding, that they could gain access to that area and provide services. Another one might be an active assailant, or law enforcement could gain access for active assailant situations, an active shooter, or other similar situations. So we believe it's very important that they have access in that on limited amounts where they can get in and provide life-saving measures. And that is just a real quick overview of that. I wanted to make sure I answer questions that you might have concerning that resolution.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
Well, chief, how's it going to be limited amounts if, you know, so the box is on the outside of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've got, let's just pick police officers, but how many on the street at any given time?
Yes, ma'am. We're not issuing to all the police officers. It's a limited amount that would be determined by working with police, by what their needs would be, maybe tact team members or watch commanders. So we're not giving them to every police officer. We just want to have that availability. If they have, as we talked about here, an active assailant or shooter situation where we're not there, they may beat us there, they may get there first, where they would have someone that could get access to that structure.
Currently, how do the firefighters handle it? Does every firefighter have one?
No, ma'am. We actually have, in all of our apparatus, we actually have a secure system that's designed where the key is locked in that system. They actually have to punch a code to unlock it, so we can track every time the key's used, and we also announce it over the radio that we're using a NOX key in those areas.
But you've got one in every one of your apparatuses?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Or apparatusi, or whatever the word is. I don't know.
And that's why we put limited, and we actually would be having MOUs with the agencies that we're working with. So our fire code official, which is our fire marshal, would make a determination based on needs, how many they would have. So it's not just we give an unlimited number. That answer your question?
Yes, it does.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, chief. So we would need a motion for the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we have 9L1. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, authorizing the execution of the Conformed Settlement Agreement with the state, Choctaw Nation, the Chickasaw Nation, and Oqot. We, staff does not necessarily think we need an executive session, but we can do that if council would like to. In the meantime, I believe we do have a presentation.
Yeah, Craig Keith with Municipal Counsel's Office is to give us a quick overview of this agreement.
Mayor and council, this is just a very brief presentation on, next slide, on the Sardis Lake and the conformance of the settlement agreement that we entered into 2016 to the federal legislation that was adopted in December 2016. Next. On August 16, 2016, the Water Utilities Trust and the city executed a settlement agreement with the Chickasaw Nation, the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, and the state to settle outstanding water dispute. Actually, it was two litigations. The settlement agreement itself provided for future conformance between the settlement agreement and federal legislation. Federal legislation was required in order to authorize and approve the settlement on behalf of the federal interests, and also on behalf of the Native American nations. On December 16, 2016, the president signed Public Law 114-322, which approved and authorized the settlement agreement. Since then, the parties have been working together to create a conformance, settlements agreement that would make the settlement agreement conform to the federal legislation. It has been agreed by the parties to execute the Conformed Settlement Agreement on March 1, 2019. For that reason, we have a resolution on the agenda authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the Conformed Settlement Agreement and Conformed Exhibits. And subsequent to execution by the parties, the state, Chickasaw Nation, the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, and the city, and the trust, it will be forwarded on to the Secretary of Interior for execution by the federal government. Next slide, please. The Conformed Agreement conforms the Settlement Act, which was passed by Congress, the September 11, 2009 order, which is actually in a case between US government and the state, the amended storage contract transfer agreement, which you actually saw in November of 2018, and the settlement agreement itself. It clarifies the Sardis Lake conservation, storage capacity, and water rights of the Latice, of the Chickasaw and Choctaw Nations, and sets the enforceability date. It revises the waiver and releases from the Choctaw Nation and Chickasaw Nations, certain references to water wells, and it corrects certain, or makes uniform, certain captions and terminology. It identifies the signatories to the documents and deletes certain precondition actions which have already been taken by the parties, which are no longer needed to be referenced in the agreement. Renumbers the sections and paragraphs. Next slide, please. Before you today is a joint resolution to be adopted by the city council. It approves and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the Conformed Settlement Agreement, including some conformed exhibits. Later this afternoon, the Water Utilities Trust will also be looking at the same joint resolution, authorizing the chairman and secretary of that trust to also sign the Conformed Settlement Agreement and Conformed Exhibits, set up for a execution by the signed dignitaries, the mayor and chairperson, on March 1 of this year. Next slide, please. What is next for this, I guess it's bigger than an issue, but what is next is, after full execution of the Conformed Settlement Agreement and publication of the Settlement Act, will be continued defense of the OWRB permit, which was issued to the city, which are currently on appeal. There'll have to be an order or resolution of the September 2009 litigation between the state and US government regarding back payment of Sardis debts, which is more formal than it is a adversary position at this time, since the city and the trust has paid off that debt as part of the exchange for the storage agreement. There'll be an eventual order dismissing the pending lawsuits. Then we will implement and comply with the Conformed Settlement Agreement and the Settlement Act. Subsequent to that, there will be studies, design studies, architectural, excuse me, archaeological studies and environmental studies to look at the use of the water, the construction of a pipeline, and the construction of a point of diversion, and eventually with a goal of having water service for central Oklahoma and the communities along the pipeline. Next slide, please. That's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
I'd move the joint resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're now on page 28 of the printed agenda, item 9M1. This is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Acker v. City of OKC. We don't necessarily need executive session unless you so desire. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion for the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9N1, resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Lancaster v. City of OKC. Same situation as the last.
Move the resolution.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 901, resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Lucas v. City of OKC.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P1, resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Russell v. City of OKC.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we have 9Q. This is to enter into executive session to receive confidential communications regarding Campbell v. City of OKC. We'd need a motion to do that.
Move we, go into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the conclusion of our other business. Similarly, 9R. This is enter into executive session to receive communications regarding Hilltop v. OKC.
Again, move that we enter into executive session.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that as well at the conclusion of our other business. This brings us to 9S1, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on these claims? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move the action.
Got a motion and a second to deny the claims. Items 9S1, A through C. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. Items A through Q. I don't believe anyone wishes to speak. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at item 11, items from council. We'll handle the printed business before I move around the horseshoe. We'll start with item 11A. So this is an ordinance on final hearing relating to noise. Engine brakes is one way to characterize it. Jake brakes may be another. We had an initial presentation, then we had a public hearing, and this is the third of the three steps we usually use for ordinances. The reason it appears here on the agenda is because this was brought forward specifically by Councilman McAtee, and so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up?
No.
This is in there to try to provide some relief for our folks who are living out in a remote area, where there might be some excessive noise being generated by tanker trucks using Jake brakes when they're not really needed. And this ordinance is intended to encourage them not to use it unless it's needed on a hill for safety reasons. So unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and the ordinance is adopted. Item 9B was previously deferred to the March 12 meeting, and so we'll go around the horseshoe. I'll start with Councilman Greiner.
Thursday is Rare Disease Day. This is a relatively new entity. It started 10 years ago, but it's exploding in popularity. It is recognized in 65 countries, hundreds of cities throughout the world. Just want to get it on the radar. Maybe it's something we'd join in. Even though it has the word rare in it, about 1 in 10 Americans, or 1 in 10 Oklahomcians, will have a rare disease at some point in their life. So one of us probably will have a rare disease at some point. Unfortunately, more than 90% of these rare diseases don't have a FDA-approved treatment. So it's just, it's an opportunity. You might, if you have an interest, if you read Twitter or follow Twitter, go to a hashtag Rare Disease Day, and you'll just see an explosion of different foundations. If you have a rare disease, or your family does, you'll probably see something on hashtag Rare Disease Day. And I just want to express my solidarity with the patients that have rare disease, and my gratitude to their families and the healthcare providers, especially what an asset the health sciences center is in treating many of these patients. Next meeting in two weeks, I'll have four resolutions as I wrap things up. I've talked to a couple, so that's, I know that there's, they're at least worth having a discussion. Whether they pass or whether we ultimately end up voting on them, they're worth having a discussion. The first is declaring First Christian Church a historic landmark. As I think we've discussed, we discussed maybe four weeks ago, the council has the ability to declare an area a historic landmark that's basically putting a zoning overlay, and before there can be demolition, it would need to go to the historic preservation and have a hearing. The reason is that the planning department is putting together a historic preservation ordinance, but they're saying they need a... ordinance, but they're saying they need another year. People are surprised at how Oklahoma City is losing so many historic structures, and in the absence of having that ordinance, which will take another year. This is, this is just a layer of protection, or it doesn't prevent demolition. It just has, it just means that you can't have a sudden unannounced demolition of structures that now thousands of people have expressed concern about. There is so much data, and I think other cities in America are way ahead of us, and they're figuring this out ahead of us. But there is now so much data and studies that maybe you can review in the next couple of weeks about the economic impact of historic preservation, the neighborhood revitalization. But there's also studies about the psychological impact, what it means to us in terms of our happiness, in terms of our emotional and mental health. And these are now quantified and discussed in the medical literature, and they're worth looking at because we are losing structures at an unfathomable rate. And this is, you know, if we do intervene in the marketplace, if we're looking for something like Maps 4, we're looking for something popular that thousands, I mean, maybe historic preservation, maybe resources, we're talking about endowments, maybe some kind of endowment for intervening and providing bridge financing, or providing, you know, helping people renovate some of these structures. Maybe that's, you know, I think it would be very popular. I mean, there are 4,400 people that signed the petition to save First Christian Church, and that was before we learned on Friday that it's, that there's a buyer contingent on being able to demolish all the properties on that space. So we're talking about thousands of people who have an interest in that one property. And I think it's, I just think it's worth looking at. It's looking at some kind of endowment, and then certainly until we get this historic preservation ordinance in place a year from now, you know, having some of these properties have a historic landmark designation gives at least one public hearing. And I think the Donoy Building is the, all the example that we need, that if we have a public hearing, sometimes people come out of left field that we never heard, all we heard about was the Donoy Building. Nobody wanted to buy it. Nobody wanted to renovate it. It wasn't economically feasible. Then we had this public process. People learned, Brahms learned how important this was to large segments of the population. And then this buyer saw the interest, and then this buyer comes out of left field, buys it, and decides to renovate it and make a go of it. So just before things like First Christian Church get demolished suddenly with no notice, one last opportunity to make sure there's no university, no arts entity, nobody that wants to potentially give this a go, and whether there's CBG funds or any other way the city could provide bridge financing or intervene to save these historic structures, it will have an impact, I believe, on the community's sense of identity and mental and emotional health. Number two is just, you know, this issue has come up with James Cooper, and we have a part of our charter that says, "Any federal or state employee that comes on the council has to resign from that federal or state position." Any federal or state employee. That's above and beyond what the state says. State law says you can't be a dual office holder. You can't have, be on the city council and be on the school board. You can't be on, you know, so, and I think there are legitimate reasons for that. But the state doesn't have any kind of preclusion, and no other city, I mean, other cities don't necessarily have preclusion. So the idea would just do a city charter amendment to bring us in alignment with state law. Have a dual office preclusion, but not this archaic, I don't know why it was started, but it's, now it's out of date, that if you're a teacher or some type of state employee, you automatically cannot serve on the council. That's, that's only Oklahoma City law. That's not state law. So just a charter amendment, that of course would require a vote of the people, but all we'd be doing is putting on the ballot. And I know that there's lots of city charter amendments that we want to look at. I know Francis has got some, and I know at some point there will be a committee to look at charter amendments. But this one's maybe just a little more pressing because we have a council member that this affects immediately.
What would be the date to be put on the ballot? You know, when?
It would be up to the council, right? I mean, you have to, you could either call a special election, or you could do it in the next citywide election.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna propose that charter amendment now, you'd want to call the election at the same time. The same, that's what, that's what the process is. Council proposes the charter amendment, and then they call the election for it to be voted on. So if you did that, say, on your last meeting on March 26, then the election date would be June 2.
But couldn't you just put it on the, we already have a citywide election coming up in December, or can't you just put it on that one?
You could.
But that'd be the cheapest, easiest. You'd save like 100. I keep asking, I keep forgetting how much it costs for an election, but...
The quickest you could do it is the second Tuesday in June.
Okay.
And then...
And the latest you could do it would be in December or the next...
In this year, this calendar year.
Okay, so that... Just food for thought for the next two weeks, and we can discuss it. The third is salary. It would also be a charter amendment, salary for council. And I realize the political quicksand, maybe, of having the council vote for a raise for itself, but we did it 10 years ago, right? The council decided to put, put it on the ballot. It didn't pass. I don't think it really solved the problem. We would, council would have gone from 12,000 to 24,000, and mayor would have gone from 24 to 48. I don't think it really solves, that really didn't solve the problem. It's not a livable wage for, for people to just do this job. And there was no campaign to really explain why we needed to do it. So the voters voted it down, but I think now, I think it would have a shot, especially if it was explained. And I think you could, instead of having a number and continually having to have charter amendments every 10, 20 years, you could just tie it to the salary of a state legislator. And as theirs changed, ours changed. And you could put the, have the mayor be a certain percentage of the governor's salary. And then it just, you don't have to keep doing charter amendments like we do, and it would be the simplest for decades to come. That's, I do... Number four is just on initiative petitions. We talked about it before. We have the ability to change our initiative petition process. If you believe in the, in the right of people to petition their government, I'm not sure why we restrict the number of days to do that process to 90 days. We have the, the state gives the cities the right to determine how many days that is. So whether that was 120, 150, 180, whatever, it just seems, if you believe in that process, then there shouldn't be anything wrong with extending the number of days to get signatures. And maybe ultimately something like a salary is, needs to come from the people and something like that as opposed to council. But again, we did, did it 10 years ago, so hopefully we can do it again. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to pass along a word of praise to one of Eric Winger's employees, Daniel Winn. Last week, I needed an answer to a question to get ready for a neighborhood meeting, and I called Daniel, and he answered the question. And then he said, "Would you like me to come to the meeting on Friday night and give the presentation to the neighborhood?" And I said, "Man, that's going the extra mile." He came, he did it. It was greatly received. My praise to Eric and Daniel for doing that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Birthday boy.
Thank you. And it's a big one, but I'll just leave it at that.
You and Michael Washington.
Yeah, yeah. Ed, and I think we'll discuss it more next time we meet in regards to the historical preservations. I think that's an important role that the city provides, that being designation of a, a structure being a historical setting. But one thing I would like to see is that, granted, if the owner comes forward and says, "I'd like to have historical preservation designated on this property," and gives us the appropriate reasons, that's great. But if an outside group proposes that, I think they should be prepared to provide resources to accommodate that designation, if, for example, it means there's going to be restricted use for something like that on the property. Some outside group, not the government, but some outside group that has an interest in that, be ready and prepared to say, "We want this historical designation for these reasons, and we're prepared to either compensate the owner or provide the resources that are necessary with regards to that type of designation." I don't think it's the responsibility of government because you'll see differences of opinions within the citizenship as to whether or not that's historical or worth incurring public funds. But if a private organization came forward and did that, then I don't see how you could really complain going through that process. That's the only comment, and we can discuss it in more detail when you bring up the proposal. But to keep putting pressure on government to do these things other than make the designation, I'd like to see it shift from the government's responsibility to a private group requesting that. Thank you.
Okay, so also on Twitter, the mayor and council were charged, were challenged by the Homeless Alliance and the Oklahoma City Employee Association to not wear socks today. They have, or not wear socks to a council meeting. I wouldn't specify today, but they are running a campaign called Sock It To Em, and the general idea is for those not wearing socks to feel what it's like to not have a pair of socks to wear. And I can admit, up here, it's cold. My ankles are freezing because I'm not wearing socks. But the other thing that they did ask was that people consider making donations of socks and toiletries and things to the Homeless Alliance. So I brought socks, and I brought toiletries, and I want to encourage everybody else to participate in this effort by the Homeless Alliance and our city employees. So don't wear socks next time, and we'll have a council meeting. I also understood that possibly there's a buyer for the church, that's another church, that wants to retain the structure. Not that that wouldn't mean that we don't, you know, want to consider something, but I have heard that there's something else in the works, and it may come down to an economic problem or something. But I do know there's somebody interested in retaining the structure. So that would be great.
I'd like to say, I did ask on Twitter if tights counted as socks, so maybe I'll try that next time. We'll do it again. But I also agree with us as far as education as in some of our communities, because some of our communities are not knowledgeable of the historic designation process or how to preserve these historic properties. So I think that's something that we also should look into when it comes to different areas or those who may not know the process. And I think that's where we fell into the project that we're working with now, even with the Brockway Center. Unfortunately, it was at the last minute when those ladies realized what the process was and tried to, to get the designation and start that process. But when they couldn't afford to do in the upkeep, that's when we had to, they had to go a different route. So now, unfortunately, we had to play, preserve it on this end, when they asked for council in 2010 to help them out, their council member, and they were unfortunate, unfortunately, were not successful in those efforts. But I do want to go back to just even when we're talking about the women and even Black History Month, talking about great things that are happening. We want to send another birthday, we got another birthday to a former councilwoman, Willa Johnson. She has a very special day, a very, one of those birthdays that you just cannot pass up. I won't give her age. I will not do that, but it's important to recognize her importance and significance from being elected in 1993 as the first African-American woman since the city incorporated in 1890 to serve, and it is an honor to follow in her footsteps as the second woman of color to do that. Also, we have March 5, a couple of things that are happening in our community. We're going to have a meeting at Prospect Baptist Church. It's going to start at 6:00 PM. We're going to have Ian Colgan talking about the Northeast duplexes. We're going to have our Maps 3 Advisory Board Member, our Parks Commissioner. We're also going to have someone from the Fire Department talking about recruitment, and hopefully we'll be able to talk more about Restore OKC, which we just passed earlier through council. And April 2 is our rescheduled date for How to Do Business with the City. We had, I guess that was a snow day last week, and we have rescheduled that, and that's going to be at the Zoo Education Building, and that's going to be at 9:00 AM. And one more thing, I'm almost done, I promise you. Oklahoma is black, and that's at Oklahoma Contemporary, highlighting Northeast Oklahoma City. And if you have not seen this exhibit, it is breathtaking, and you have to see it. And Black Space Oklahoma, they're having a storytelling project, and that's going to be at Page Woodson this Saturday. And that story's from our elders, and we're going to hear from Dr. George Henderson and also Ms. Anita Arnold. And while we're talking again about just black space, black history, telling our story, I think it's important also for us to understand the importance of even some of the names of, what's in a name? We talk about names of buildings, names of schools, names of people and communities, and why they are very specific to the community. When we're talking about even the Edwards family, I did a post yesterday about the Edwards family and the Edwards School, Elementary School, which unfortunately has been one of those schools proposed to shut down. But that school was founded and donated by the Edwards family in 1938, and that building still stands today as far as just being a staple in that community. We had the Edwards Memorial Hospital, which was literally across the highway on 16th and Grand, which is now Edwards Redeemer Nursing Home. So that family had very great, important footprints in that community. And unfortunately, if that name is lost, what are we to do about that history that goes with that? And even when we're talking about just the School of Northeast High School, that's my alma mater, but we're looking at that school being built and founded in 1937. And when I looked on the website, just to see the history of the school, it mentions nothing about former councilmember A.L. Dow and his efforts to have his son admitted in that school when it was an all-white school in 1961, where he had to sue the city of Oklahoma City Public Schools in order for his son to be able to attend that school. And they finally integrated by 1970. It was passed in 1965, but it was to be fully integrated by 1970. So that was a previous council member that also paved the way for me to be able to attend Northeast High School and be a member of, and serve a community that served me that now I can serve. So I think it's important. I know a lot of people say, "What is in a name?", but we have to look and understand the culture of those names as well.
Mark, can I say one thing about that real, just, I meant to say this earlier. On the historic, I mean, one place that's worth visiting is Nikki's Facebook page. It is stunning in the breadth and education in terms of historical sites. And if you want like anecdotal or empirical evidence of what this means to people, you can look at the hundreds of people responding to Nikki's Facebook posts, and how happy it makes them, and how they appreciate being educated in the service that she's providing on her Facebook posts. So it's definitely worth visiting as we continue this discussion. Thanks.
Happy birthday, David, and happy birthday, Willa.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to item 12, city manager reports.
Yes, we've got, sorry, we've got a couple of reports on. Now, we're going to postpone the presentation on the council priorities. We'll bring that back at another meeting. Tammy Fait is here from the Great Rock City Chamber of Commerce to give us an update on the retail strategies.
Thank you. So Tammy Fait, manager of retail development and recruitment. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk to you, and specifically thank you to Councilman Greenwell. I know you're the one who wanted to kind of hear more about retail trends and what's kind of happening in the industry overall, so appreciate you asking us to come and talk.
And I might add, for anyone watching, because all the time we all get hit with, "We want this, we want that store, we want that," you know, whatever, you know, store or restaurant that other people have in other cities. And it's always nice to be able to tell them that there is a person who wakes up every morning thinking about this stuff and working on this stuff, and that's Tammy.
Thank you.
So now everybody gets to hear your daily mission.
All right. Well, I'm going to give you a kind of a quick overview, make it as quick as I can, but we're going to talk about the retail changing and evolving, and kind of discuss the highlights of five Fs of retail, and talk about attractors, activator, and attractions. As we all know, the retail footprint is shrinking nationwide, enclosed malls have lost over 1 billion square feet of retail as well as strip shopping centers. So you might ask, what does this mean for retail? The consumer's expectations are evolving from ownership to access, material goods to experience-based, customized to individualized, and having options available on a variety of platforms, from a fragmented identity to a collective identity. What that means is, many years ago, the saying was, "Do it, but don't talk about it." What that means is many years ago, the saying was, do it but don't talk about it. Today, retailers need to talk about it more than ever. The consumer is wanting to know what your company stands for, what your beliefs are, what your values are, and what things you support. Walmart launched a customer campaign with American Red Cross to assist the Hurricane Harvey relief. As part of the customer campaign, Walmart matched customer donations two to one with a cash and product donation of up to 10 million to support the American Red Cross disaster relief. This was one of the most successful campaigns that they had ran. Demographics are changing, and this affects how we as consumers are shopping. The birth year of a person is affected by the life stage, cultural events, technology, and economics. We've all heard of generational profiles. Gen X is the most diverse group. Five words or less, big picture, uses anonymous social media platforms like Secret, Whisper, and Snapchat. Millennials, the entitled, the resilient, the Facebook selfie era. The Gen X, most stressed out, last and along generation. They want reassurance and security. The Boomers, push boundaries, stand up for equal rights. As you can imagine, with all these different profiles, utilizing technology differently is changing the shopping patterns. Hence the reason omnichannel is so important. Many people make the assumption that retail is dying. However, if retail is dying, then why is Amazon investing in brick and mortar with the purchase of Whole Foods and Amazon Books? You have to have brick and mortar to carry out the brand. Here's a few examples of companies that started online, and they're now looking for brick and mortar locations throughout the U.S. Now let's look at the site selection of retailers, pre-mobile data versus pre-Amazon to post-mobile data. Density still drives retail, and with Oklahoma City being 620 square miles, it makes it a little more difficult for retailers to understand our market. The number of rooftops in a given area, in addition to the number of visits, unique visitors to a site, annual visits, distance the consumer is willing to travel, and the life of a concept are really what are driving development today. Since a place is shifting, we are an instant gratification society. We're shifted to an event-based. So if you look at areas that have like a concentration of energy, like Lake Hefner, the connectivity of the trails, the restaurants, the investment Oklahoma City is making in Scissor Tail Park, the Omni Hotel, and enhancing our trail systems are examples of placemaking. Many restaurants, bars are adding shuffleboard leagues, cornhole tournaments to bring people together. The investment Oklahoma City is making in infrastructure through maps is key to attracting development to our city. A recent site visit last month, we had two different development groups in town, and the one thing they mentioned is that the park is such a nice asset that we're going to have. We have the park in place, they don't have to build that park, they can create the development around it. When we talk about activators, Apple Store is the first thing that comes to mind. Everything they sell, you can order online, yet there's always, everybody's packed in the store. We wonder, why is that like that? It allows like-minded people together and share ideas. The picture illustrated here is an example of a local coffee shop that does coffee tastings to help the consumer understand the complexity of the taste and the different acidity levels between the various regions where beans are grown. Another example is commonplace books located in Midtown. Their mission is to build a place where people can cultivate and share lifelong relationships with books. At a recent retail conference, a developer mentioned they are spending more money on streetscaping and hardscaping than they are on the actual building, and they are using digital to enhance the experience by providing interactive directories, 3D wayfinding, creating selfie Instagram-worthy elements on-site. How do you get the consumer to share outside the box? One developer said, if it's not Instagram-worthy, we don't want it in our box. Creating a human factor, personalization, and creating a connection that they want to share. Here's an example of a development we have right here in Oklahoma City, 180-acre development, Chisholm Creek. They've added playground equipment, fire pits, fountains, and colorful lights. In terms of attractors, one of our local boutiques here has a sewing classes. They do VIP night, drink specials in the store, and that store is Black Skintilla. It's a local boutique. Rotating specials, high-profile social media presence is creating local partnerships are some of the things Capital's Ice Cream has implemented in Midtown. You know it's working when it's 20 degrees outside and there's still a line outside the door. Need to reflect the community and the development regardless of what it is, if it's an office building or if it's a coffee shop. The investment Homeland made at 18th and Classen has shown a significant increase in sales of up 80%. And what they have done is really incorporated our brand from a community and everything from the decor to the aisles to the local products. The continued investment in our retail districts like Plaza District, Paseo District, Western Avenue, Adventure District, and Stockyard City make up the fabric of our community. How does your physical space represent the brand and concepts? How does the experience stimulate the sense and engage the consumer? Retailers need to provide something that you can't get at home, activating their relationships. Participation makes people care. How do we force people to talk to one another? Retail concepts that are on the rise are the ones that are identified in the five F's: fitness, furniture, food, fashion, and fun. I'm going to kind of speak about a few of those that are in our community. Fitness is at the top of the list. This includes yoga rooms, climbing walls, Pilates machines, and the amount spent on athletic apparel. REI is a new-to-market concept that's under construction at the Belle Isle Shopping Center. Lululemon has done an expansion of their existing store, Classen and Curve, and they also added Athleta to the mix. Chisholm Creek recently announced cycle bar and indoor cycling studio. In addition, Lifetime Fitness has anchored the area out near Quell Springs Mall that's owned by Brookfield. When we talk about furniture, showroom, setup space, curating the experience from couching to dining rooms and colorful schemes. Fun, the fun experiential concepts that are on the rise are like Topgolf, Brickopolis, iFly, Main Event, Fassler Hall, in addition to many others that are currently looking at our market. There's one that should announce later this week. From fashion, The Library is a shop over in the Paseo District that shows an example of a membership-based clothing store that allows you to rent, reserve items, pick them up, wear them, and return them for a monthly fee. This allows a consumer to stay up to date on the latest trends in fashion. And talking about food, we are really lucky because we have so many wonderful entrepreneurs that are here in Oklahoma City. National chains are being replaced by local startups with aspiring chefs that are changing the culinary experience. From fresh ingredients, locally sourced, exotic and unusual offerings are changing menus. When developers look at coming to Oklahoma City, they want to understand the local food scene first and build relationships with our local food groups. Food halls are currently on the rise. Right now, there's currently 143 food halls in the U.S. The average square foot is about 23,000, and the experts in the arena expect there to be 300 by the end of 2019. Here's a quick list of the projects that were either announced or opened in 2018, and these are all destination, new-to-market concepts that are located here in Oklahoma City. At this point, I'll open it up for any questions.
Are any of these located in South Oklahoma City or just North Oklahoma City?
There is new-to-market, new concepts that have opened in South Oklahoma City. Sprouts is one that we worked with, which is a grocery store out of Arizona. So we actually went to Arizona, met with their real estate team, and looked at sites in Oklahoma, or South Oklahoma City.
Some of the other ones that I was thinking of, I didn't see in the presentation. So I was curious about that.
Some of the other...
Other things that I've seen develop in South Oklahoma City. So I can follow up with you later, though. Thank you.
Right. A lot of times when a company is looking at locating here, they have a specific demographic or a specific traffic count that they're looking for. So a lot of times, we will meet with them, we'll do site visits and tours, and showcase them the market, but ultimately, they kind of drive where that location is.
When you're, so Roy Williams has told us that 40% of all sales tax dollars are from people that don't live in Oklahoma City. And I'm convinced that a huge number of that 40% is people coming from elsewhere in Oklahoma for their health care into Oklahoma City. And so I'm wondering, I mean, we always talk about rooftops, but if we're looking at retail development in South Oklahoma City, I mean, do you talk with retailers about that trend, about how many people are coming and where they're coming? The hospital off of 89th, off of, on 44th, on the south side, I mean, do we, do we talk about health care as a strategy on where to place retail?
It is. I mean, we've met with many developers at some of the different trade shows that we go to. I know Mayor Holt goes with us to ICSC last year, and will go with us again this year. And depending on who that developer is, some of them do specialize in health care, and if that's their specialty, then, but if you're looking at a particular site, because typically they know where they want to locate based on the competition, so whoever their competitor is, they will know proximity of where they want to be, and we'll pull all the information from educational attainment for whatever employers are in that area, whatever we can pull that will kind of give them the picture of what that looks like. Because we're so spread out, I feel like that's kind of one of the cool, I mean, one of the things that Oklahoma City is good at. We have an entire research staff at the chamber. Actually, one of our newest research members is here with me, Zubar. And anytime a retailer comes to us, regardless if they are local or a small retailer or a national big box, we provide the same service to both.
And so would I just ask, that maybe gets on the radar of the research, and I'm just telling you, from treating probably thousands of people in, not in Oklahoma City, but in Oklahoma, who are traveling every day to Oklahoma City, they don't like to drive in Oklahoma City. They just want to stay on the highway, go to the hospital that they're going to, shop in that area, and then come back to their rural community.
Right.
That's just my observation over many, many years, 20 years of treating patients outside of Oklahoma City but within Oklahoma, is that they're coming here every day to the VA, to the Health Science Center, to the hospital on South 89th, South 44th, Mercy, Baptist, and they want to do some shopping when they're, when they're coming here anyway for a doctor's appointment or a medical procedure or things like that.
Right.
Tammy, I've always thought that one of the challenges in Oklahoma City is because we're so big, but we also have so many places that people could go. You know, we've got multiple pockets, not like Tulsa with just one area.
It is so spread out.
I thought it's just been hard to understand, or how to get people to understand, that we drive for destination shopping. We'll go a long way to get what we want, and I just, I just don't know how well we've communicated.
I think that traffic, traffic counts are really crucial to that. So anytime that we're updating traffic count information, that's one of the key factors that retailers look at and developers look at, but it's a lot of it's co-tendency too. So they want to be where like-minded tenants are going to be. So even though, let's say we want a particular retailer in an area, or retailer to be in an area, they want to go where they're clustered together, which is why I use Chisholm Creek as an example. You have 180-acre development, which if you think back of when that first started, the anchor to that was the hospital. So having that there to be able to be a provider for ongoing, you know, lunch crowd or dinner crowd, and then it kind of helps circulate the traffic for other retail around there. So.
And I'd just like to point out, I know we're being, we have to get a little more creative when it comes to getting more retail in our Northeast communities. So where are we as far as just, just some of what we're looking for and what we're looking at?
We've worked with the property owners in the Northeast area and some of the different, we've brought different developers in to kind of look at that area as well. I mean, looking at the Innovation District and hoping that once we get things started in that area, it kind of resonates outward as well. So I think having a grocery store over there will be really key. So we've worked with a grocery consultant and looked at kind of strategies for that area as well. So I think once we have a few anchors in that area, it will really kind of help drive the rest of the retail.
Tammy, thank you. This was great, and I would encourage you to try to share this information with privately-owned retailers. You know, I know the national chains have a lot of great marketing information, and they use that in deciding where they're going to locate and how they design their stores. But that concept that you pointed out, like with the Homeland on 18th and Classen, how it really dramatically improved their success, I think would be helpful to share that with, you know, privately-owned retailers who may not have access to that kind of information. And Todd, you know the issue about South Oklahoma City and the lack of retail development? What I try to explain at times, not always, but at times, you know, people say, why can't we have more upscale retail or, you know, different restaurants? And I said, well, in today's environment, you know, these companies don't want to make a bad mistake, so they analyze big data, and they have access to your credit cards. And not personal per se, but they, they see where you're spending your money at, and if your credit cards demonstrate that you spend a lot of time at Walmart, Target, those types of stores, that's where they're going to put a Walmart and a Target as opposed to a more upscale store. It's based upon individual, actual spending habits, and they have access to that information, and it goes a long way in their decisions. But anyway, this is helpful. One, okay, go ahead, Tammy.
And speaking of South Oklahoma City and you mentioning Target, I mean, I know that we lost a Target in South Oklahoma City because it moved to Moore, but we worked, our team worked really closely with some development group out of Dallas, who has went in there and repositioned that entire shopping center. They added the AutoZone hub. They're working with some other tenants to get in there. So we've been with them from day one, pretty much through the whole process.
And that's just catty corner to Southwest Medical Center. So, you know, you might need your car worked on while you're getting your heart addressed.
Yes.
When Sears is closed. But I mean, there are certain examples of where retail has failed, those companies that have failed to keep up with changes. And so last question, Tammy. So do you think there's an opportunity for retail to be along the Oklahoma City Boulevard by the park area?
I think once our density increases and we get more people living downtown, I think that will, that will increase. We have the amenities in place, and the more amenities that we offer in terms of that placemaking, I think that really makes it key. So, and being able to cluster those together, I think is going to be important, too.
So you're not proposing we try to restrict any new development to just strictly retail around that area?
The thing that comes up challenging when trying to get retailers to look at downtown is Penn Square Mall is the most successful mall in the entire state. It's owned by Simon Properties.
Yeah.
And then you got Classen Curve that's owned by Washington Prime, and they're not that far away, is what the, the general consensus is of retailers. So really, the more people that we can show that are pulling from the downtown area, but when they run their different models, it's showing that it's too close proximity to open another store when they're, the people downtown are driving to Penn Square or driving to Classen Curve.
And that's a point that Councilwoman Sawyer just made. We drive, and it's no big deal to drive 20, 30 minutes to go shopping to our...
To a grocery store.
Yeah, to our favorite retail outlet. But this is encouraging. And final comment, I promise. So I was at an event last night, and I was speaking with this gentleman who said that a physician is looking at staying here in Oklahoma City or taking another opportunity out of state. And one of the factors that they mentioned was, we now have such a large variety of great restaurants in Oklahoma City, it's making it difficult to leave, you know. So I think your point's well made, that we do have a lot of positive examples of retail here in Oklahoma City. We just may not recognize that at times. So, thank you. And I would encourage that we continue to focus on certain areas like the Stockyards, Northeast Oklahoma City, I-240, which may be beyond hope, I don't know, from a retail perspective, but there are certain areas that I think I would like to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are two other reports in. We don't have presentations on those. One is the February Sales and Use Tax Report. Sales, I mean, use tax collections continue to be very strong. We're well ahead target in both. We did see the sales tax actually slow, the underlying growth in sales tax in February slowed to about 1.7% growth, so something for us to watch. And then we've got our debt report, our annual debt report in there is also. Also, we'd be glad to take questions on that if you have any later time.
Okay, thanks, and that's all available online at theagenda@okc.gov. That brings us to citizens to be heard, and we have a few. Probably butchered your last name last time, so I'm just going to refrain this time.
I know if there's a pause between the first name and last name, it's me. My name's Lynn Rostischul. I live at 3209 Robin Ridge Road. I'm in your district. And I'm coming, you guys have kind of already talked about the church a little bit, so, and I wanted to let you know about the Wavy Bank. We do have someone who is stepping forward to work with OKCPS on that, so.
To move it later or to maintain it in place?
To lease it and maintain it and use it. So they, the school district won't have any responsibility at all. And that would not have happened if all the press hadn't been generated about it, if we hadn't spread the word about it. That is kind of something that Mr. Shadid was talking about with the Denae Building. The whole buzz about all of that brought forward an appropriate owner who was now saving the building. And like you said, there is a church in the wings who is interested in the First Christian Church complex, so all of the press has helped with that as well. I do think it's very important to landmark these buildings so that we, it doesn't have to come to a head in a big crisis every time. This church certainly deserves it. I'm going to be emailing a packet to you with some information. Preservation Oklahoma has sent a letter in support of landmarking this building. The Central AIA, I believe, is sending a letter this morning as well. And we have over 4,500 signatures on our petition so far, and that is growing every single day. So this is something I cannot wait to discuss in two weeks. We're going to hopefully have a crowd to talk about it, and I really hope you consider this motion and the importance of it. And talking about Oklahoma City being a unique community, it's buildings like this that make us unique. Losing every single one of these buildings homogenizes us even more, and I don't think we can afford that.
Can I ask you a question? So the City Council has designated a structure, a historic landmark, seven times. There are seven structures, I believe?
I think seven or eight, yeah.
Is there anything else on the, on your radar that would be a potential candidate? Or you can think about that and talk about it in two weeks?
Oh, other buildings, you mean? Oh, I could give you a list. And not just mid-century buildings. I mean, there, there are a lot of buildings throughout town that are culturally significant, architecturally significant. And like you said earlier, you know, the Planning Commission's got another year before their plans come forward. I mean, I don't know that we have a year. You know, the Brockway Clinic is one very important example of that. I know you can't do anything about that because it's in the medical district, but there are buildings all over this city because we are lucky enough to still be in a boom time that are threatened and should be considered for landmark status.
Is the Gold Dome on that list?
No. We haven't, no.
Okay. That's an issue.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert Adams and May Stevenson?
Good morning or good afternoon, I don't know what time it is.
Unfortunately, we've reached the afternoon. I hope you weren't here since 8:30, but if you are, thank you for your patience. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address?
My name is May Frances Stevenson. I'm in Ward Seven. My address is 1108 Northeast 122nd.
Robert Adams, 2405 Northeast 45th. Thank you.
And we're here, and I'm pretty sure Councilwoman Nikki has explained to you our needs and concern about having MAP 3 Northeast Center at the low, at the proposed site. And I'll be 70 coming August.
Having a...
And I'll be 70. And I, I think I'm kind of healthy, but we do not want, and we want, we just urge you to just listen to us and sympathize with us. We, the reason why we do not want that center there is because of health reasons, because of the hazardous contaminated soil that's there, and also there are other personal safety issues. Being my age, we want to be in a safe environment. Okay? A safe environment. Okay? We have visited the other locations. Beautiful, beautiful. And we know that the one that will be placed in Northeast will also be beautiful, too. And we're looking forward to it. But we're going to just urge you to reconsider a different site.
Okay. Also, Councilman Nikki Knight, Ward Seven, the citizens of residents over here on Ward Seven, we just want to give you this petition of MAP 3 and let you know that the Northeast Center Health and Wellness Center that they proposed on Northeast 23rd and Martin Luther King is definitely not a suitable spot for us. And we just asking you to take this petition, look it over, and thank you for your consideration.
And on this, we're speaking on a half of 348 people that we started talking with them on Friday afternoon this past weekend, and then we had these petitions given to us on Monday before four. And there are others that will come, and Councilwoman Nikki, as soon as we get those, we'll give those to you. But we just want you to be concerned. Again, this is a place for senior citizens, and we already have health issues. Okay? And we don't want to add anything to it. It need to be a stress-free place. Do you agree with that?
And I'd just like the council to know that we appreciate your support, and I am 68. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about this? Because right before you came on, Craig, Mr. Pettis Senior came and asked if the location of that senior wellness center had been decided? And Mr. Couch said, no, it hasn't been decided. And then shortly after that, there was an editorial in a newspaper, which was one of the most unprofessional attacks on a council member I've ever seen by somebody on, I believe, on the Urban Renewal Board. But in that article, it seemed to suggest that the location has been decided. So as we sit here today on February 26th, has that location been decided?
It has not.
It has not?
No, that was the site they were focusing on, and that's when they did public meetings on that. And Nikki had actually asked for additional meetings to make sure that we're communicating with the citizens in that area, and we got the pushback on that site. And so we're willing to look at other sites. I think there's a lot of, that's been invested in that particular site, so it's still on the list. We're going to be looking at other sites that might be potential sites for that.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Shadid, there was not much in that issue of that newspaper that day that was accurate, so. In addition to that.
And my question to, did you have proposed sites in here as well?
Yes.
That you want us to look at?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and thank you. Thank you for what you just mentioned to us. Hey, that helps me. I can, I can kind of release some of that stress, and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
You all have a good day.
You too. Thank you for your patience again, and thank you for coming down. Michael Washington is not present.
Rodney.
It's good, David, we're good. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address?
Rodriguez Johnson, 2300 Northeast 27th. I'm a co-owner of HLR FlorTech and Janitorial Services. I've been here maybe four or five times, just come in here and sit and listen. So I thought, man, it's only right for me to come in this time and introduce myself formally, since I come in here and kind of listen to your comments, laugh at your comments a little bit. So I just wanted to come in and introduce myself for the first time formally in front of y'all, and that's about it. Thank you.
Well, nice to meet you. Thanks for introducing yourself. And now someone who needs no introduction, Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk from Ward Seven. My address is 2328 North Missouri. I've come to a lot of city councils, so I want to tell you a little about me. I've been a 501(c)(3) for 18 years. I have Ronnie Kirk's Teaching Center for 18 years, so I teach kids lifetime skills. I've been the Vice President of the Men Association Foundation of Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City, y'all have a sign for our organization at Douglas Park today. It's been there for five years. I'm the President of Ward Seven Justice Seekers. I have a group of small kids from three to 12 years old, diamond diva dancers, where we teach them modern dancing. Been doing that for three years. Last Sunday, I was invited to church on Northwest, I mean, Northeast 30th and Cali. I had lunch, I mean, went to services where Miss Thelma Parks, she spoke, and also spoke at her Black History that day. Wednesday, Monday, they called me and asked me where I'd come to a special event, where I also had lunch with Miss Thelma Parks. That was, I told, that was an honor to me to even be in the same space as she were. I'm so grateful for that. What I come to Oklahoma City Council today for, I also went to when they, to when they started talking about they were rezoning the schools, which is perfect. But I also think the schools that they're closing down, you know, they already have fallout shelters there at several other schools throughout the whole city. They already have fallout shelters there. We know the schools are going to close, and they're integrating the kids to come to such places. But we like the shelters that's already in our communities to be open for the people that lives in those neighborhoods when the tornadoes come to these, to the city. All the Channel 5, Channel 4, all the stations already telling us block to block where these tornadoes will hit. But most of people nowadays, they don't have tornado shelters, but they say, go to your closet. Why should we go to a closet when you got us a, you got us a shelter in our area, big as this room here, where we can go and give us protection? We'd just like the city to help us with our older people, since we already have the shelters and the, we know the schools are going to close. They already said they're going to close. We ain't got no problem with that. But let the citizens of Oklahoma City use these shelters that you already have built for us. Long time ago, Gori James told me, he was sitting right up here, he said, Ron, if you want the city to help you do something, you got to come to these council meetings. So I want y'all to help us, and y'all citizens, to use these shelters that you have for. The schools are going to be closed, so let our people use these shelters when y'all, when they, when they give us warning. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We have two items, 9Q and 9R, that we previously voted to go into executive session regarding, so we will go do that, and then we will return.